The February 25th, 2016 Longview City Council will be called to order. Our prayer and pledge tonight will be led by Pastor Jerry Stanmore of Longview Full Gospel Church. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, first let me just say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for your protection and provision. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to pray to you. Lord, thank you just for loving us. In the scripture you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. Since you've established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice, therefore I pray for our elected officials, Mayor Andy Mack, for the various levels of city officials, and for our police chief, Mike Bishop, and all those that provide services who are striving to better our community, in particular for this assembled council, I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interest of and issues of our times. Also a sense of welfare and true need for the people, and a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and confidence in what is good and pleasing to you. Also the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And also God give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them the assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our great and beloved city of Longview. In Jesus' name we pray, thank God, and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Stanmore for your kind words. We appreciate you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We're now to employee recognition. Tonight we're going to talk about the code sweep in District 4. Fire, police, sanitation, animal control, and code compliance. An area revitalization sweep took place in Longview in the area between Alpine, Highway 80, Eastman, and Leota Streets. Sanitation, fire, police, code compliance, animal control, all worked together to clean up the area. They cleared unwanted trash, litter, discarded items in yards, and junk vehicles. Staff visited with area residents. The fire department drove the area and canvassed residence on issues with burn barrels to fire prevention in the areas, distributed smoke alarms, and education materials. The sanitation department picked up five loads with the bulky waste, four trash truck loads, 68 tires, 21 bags of litter. The P A R representatives identified vacant houses with problems areas and with some issues. The code department identified 78 properties with junk, litter problems, four vacant lots, 41 junk vehicles, three zoning issues, two properties without water, and engaged in 37 citizen contact. Thank you to all who helped improve this area of Longview. More areas will be cleaned up in the coming months. I would like to invite all these... Hello back there! Okay, gang, listen, what a great job. Hey, listen, here's the deal. You know, this is all part of our citywide cleanup. You know, this helps in all aspects of Longview. This helps rid us of crime, rid us of unwanted activities, unwanted areas of our city that we're going to clean up. We're going to do it one area at a time. And I can tell you all, this is not the first one you've done. Y'all do this in multiple areas, and they've done it in David's district. And we want to continue to do this. And understand, we cannot do it without you guys. Y'all are awesome. You help our city. You are the ones that are bringing the city back. We can take it back to our own streets and neighborhoods, and we appreciate you from the bottom of our hearts. We thank you. We ask you to keep it up. Don't stop now. We've got a long way to go, but every step forward is one step we're not going backwards. So thank you all so much. Please a round of applause. And you can call it what you may, but those are real heroes in Longview. Those are people going out and doing things that nobody else wants to do. And you know what? My hat's off to you, to every one of you all, and I hope you continue. And I hope we all continue this as a community, because this is where it starts, one step at a time. Thank you all so much. That's part of being one Longview right there. Very good. Okay, citizen comments. I have a few speaker cards. April Burton.
I am on the board of Newgate Mission, and I'm also currently taking the class, the Getting Ahead Transitional Class, in order to take over and be the next teacher. And a lot of our citizens had questions regarding the residential area over there, more so the city code, and whether or not there's a plan to update the city code and make the landlords more accountable for the living conditions that are in that area. So is there? There is?
We're not supposed to answer.
Okay. I guess also the main question that they also had was making sure that updating the city code wouldn't require gentrification or the displacement of those same citizens. So that was just a concern that they had.
Thank you so much. Paul Martin.
My name is Paul Martin. I also am attending that Getting Ahead class at Newgate Mission. I've been a member of your community for some time now, and I'd like to speak with you for just one moment. When I was asked to come here today, I was hesitant. I was preoccupied with the idea that my voice alone would mean little. I am not native to this community, and from the outside at it I glance, and I see a community that has expansion in commerce on its side. And those are the obvious signs of progress for those who are fortunate enough to contribute and to reap the benefits. But as I look closely, and it has been in those two years that I've been here, I've seen some ugly scars that make a mockery of Longview's intent to increase and progress. And I know that it is the hope of this council to aid in achieving that success of the goal. I was hesitant to come here to say that there's a lack in this community, because I feel like an outsider, pointing blame when I don't have all the facts. But truth is, there's an obvious line between the haves and the have-nots. And it's consistent and conducive to one side of these tracks. The difference between the classes here, though I see, has a destructive enemy against its cause, and that's you, the men and women of Longview who choose not to let any one side of Longview die. Now, we live in a community which will not allow the corrosive capability of poverty to impede against one single member of its community. And I was hesitant to come here today, just a little, because I was afraid that I might ruin any possibility of my peers receiving any of your support in this moment. But as I embrace the community that has embraced me, it is my responsibility tonight to become aware, yours too, aware of the fact that there's a great tragedy occurring here, and that is there of those who are forgotten, laying silently in dilapidated structures not fit to live in, and children, as well as adults who have little chance to become productive members of society because they live under conditions that are counterproductive. I point to the need for low-priced food sources, day and evening activities and classes for children as well as adults, and increase in support for our community of existing programs already in place. Also, let us be aware of any ordinances or resolutions that would benefit these unfortunate members of our society, putting them before ourselves. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. I have no other cards for citizen comment. Is anyone else who would like to speak during citizen comment? Very good. We're now to presentations. Ms. Ishihara, you have a presentation for the Zonta Club.
Let me, we'll go up here. Good? Have a big check. This is probably the most fun thing I'll get to do tonight, right? There you go, hold that for me, please. I am blessed this year to be the president of the Zonta Club of Longview, who for the past two years have been focusing on raising awareness and education about the very real issue of sex trafficking in our community. During our community awareness, way at the end of the meeting, if you decide you're going to stay that long, I will be inviting you to attend our Walk Against Violence this Saturday at 8:00 a.m. starting at the First Baptist Church downtown. It'll be an effort to bring our community together to stop violence against women and to stop sex trafficking here in Longview, which many of us do not realize how big of an issue it is, but it is a serious issue here in Longview. Earlier this year, I was able to present on behalf of the Zonta Club a $10,000 check to the police department to buy some specialized equipment, and I'm excited tonight to present you with a check for $3,400 to send a couple of officers to some specialized training. We're also in March going to be bringing in a national-renowned expert on sex trafficking who will train 50 or more of our Longview police officers on identifying sex trafficking and helping to work in that arena. So thank you, Chief, for your partnership. You've been an incredible partner, and we're excited to support you and your work.
Where do you get those big checks made? I like that. Okay, that's cool.
But then you have nowhere to put them. I have them all at this point.
I'd just like to have one. Okay. Next is presentation or certificates of recognition to Mark Peters and Keith Peters. Chief Bishop, you guys come on up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sit down.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard, thank you for giving me the opportunity to make a presentation here today to Mark and Kevin Peters. I'd like to read a little brief narrative here explaining the situation. On December 4th of 2015, Longview Police were dispatched to a suspicious person call near BJ's Restaurant and Brew House near the Longview Mall. According to the reporting party, there were three young males with backpacks looking into vehicles. Officers soon located the three individuals. While officers had the three detained, continuing their investigation, one of the three broke away and fled from officers on foot. Longview citizens Mark Peters and his brother Kevin Peters saw the individual fleeing from police officers. They quickly exited their vehicle and were able to catch and hold the juvenile until officers were able to get to them and take the juvenile into custody. Police learned during this time that all three of the juveniles were runaways out of Houston, Texas. They were later reunited safely with their families in Houston. In general, law enforcement expects citizens to be good witnesses, observe and report illegal activity, and only get involved in a situation when someone's life may be in danger. Mark and Keith Peters went above and beyond what is asked of any Longview citizen, and I believe the safe apprehension of this runaway was a direct result of their actions. Thank you for assisting your officers when you felt there was a need to intervene and act on their behalf.
You guys, hold on, get in the picture. Hold on, get the picture real quick. On a side note, I've known these two young men pretty much their whole lives. They're a wonderful Christian family that has grown up here in Longview and serves our community and makes their homes here and their businesses here. And we really appreciate you guys so much. It's nice to see Keith on this side of the law, not the other side of the law this time. I'm just kidding, Keith. Great guys, great family. Okay, public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Good evening. Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard, earlier today, I provided you all with a copy of the Longview Police Department's annual contact report of 2015 that outlines and details our reporting requirements to the state in regards to the racial profiling law. Within your booklet, I placed a memo in there explaining the contents of the report. And over the next couple of days, after you've had the opportunity to read the report, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. This report is also uploaded to our department's website at longviewpolice.com, and it is also uploaded to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. So just wanted to give you a brief about the report, and if, after you've looked at it, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Want to mention that the police department will be working in conjunction with our municipal courts and our city marshal's office. March 5th, we will be having and participating in the statewide warrant roundup. We're asking anybody that may have any outstanding tickets or warrants to come in and pay those now. And they can do that at longviewtexas.gov, or they can pay over the telephone at 1-800-444-1187. Last Friday, we graduated seven recruits from the police academy. This morning, we commissioned those seven officers. They'll be moving into the next phase of their training out in the field with their field training officers. I'd like to introduce you to Officer Jonathan Wolf, Larry Solomon, Austin Bass, Heath DeCarmo, Caleb Brizdin, Justin Sledge, and Cindy Howell are the newest additions to the Longview Police Department. Here in the next week or two, they'll be assigned to their FTOs, and they will be out there in the field. I will mention that out of this academy class, two of our officers were awarded special awards given by the academy. One was a class valedictorian, and the other one was the top gun for the class. So have a good group of recruits there, and look forward to getting them out in the field. Talked about the code sweep a little bit ago, so I won't get into too much on that. But what a great feeling it is to see all the city departments come together and work with the citizens and the council members in this effort to clean up the block. So I know it's something that our officers are excited about, and hope that this continues. I'd also like to remind anybody that's interested in our Women's Safety Seminar. This is a free women's safety course that's designed specifically for women. It'll run from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., April 18th to 23rd. A whole host of topics will be covered, to include women's safety, workplace violence, handgun safety. We'll have an opportunity to try out our firearms simulator and spend a day at the range. Anybody that's interested can contact Officer Kristy Bryan at 903-808-3388. And we have about 40 seats available. And I'd be, any questions?
Chief, with the new recruits, where does that put our numbers to again now?
That puts us down to seven.
Seven short.
Seven vacancies. We currently have five in background that will get ready to start the March Academy.
And once again, how long has it been since we've had this many officers, Chief?
It's been a while.
Thank you, sir. Also, Chief, two other things. I know we've had some increases and break-ins, car thefts, especially in North Longview area. At your next public safety update, would you do me a favor, and plus online, encourage the citizens in your own way, the way you know how to do it, to keep their doors locked, shut their garages, don't leave things visible to invite people to break in. Just, you know, encourage them to do the things that you all know that will deter the criminals from making an easy target of us. And I know that you all are working on an online crime and safety incident map for the community. And I would ask that you would update us on that at your next public safety update as well, because I know that's going to be something very important for the community in the years to come. And so if you wouldn't mind making that more apparent, and we'll get more information out there to the public through social media.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, man. Chief Stillman, we missed you last time.
Sorry I wasn't here. Mayor Matt, council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you and highlight a few activities that we've been involved with since the last council meeting. The first one I'll talk about is the state of Texas called for our help, and we deployed a crew and an engine out to Amarillo area. They had a breakout of wildfires because of the weather conditions last weekend, and they were trying to get a little bit ahead of it, so they started calling for help early. So I'm pleased and I'm proud of the fact that Lieutenant Corey Clanton, driver engineer Jimmy Lawrence, firefighter medic Craig Barton, and firefighter medic Chris McGuinness stepped up to that call and went out and helped them get that situation under control. These guys did a great job. And too, like Chief Bishop, I won't really elaborate a whole lot, but we were pleased to be a part of the code sweep. That's a great opportunity for us to get some face time and get out in the community. Again, Aisha was our representative up here on the stage tonight, but our entire fire marshal's office and the fire station two B shift crew really worked hard that day to make as many contacts as they could and really preach the message of fire safety and look for some situations that might be able to prevent some of these residential fires from happening in this area. So pleased to be a part of that. And then last, but certainly not least, we hope you'll join us Monday, leap year day, at the Fire Department Training Center from 10:00 to 12:00. We'll be recognizing the service of Captain Hilton J. Captain J works at Station 7 on Gilmer Road on B shift. He'll be retiring from us with 25 years of service, a faithful service I might add. So hopefully you can join us for that send-off as we celebrate his last shift with the Fire Department on that day. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. You're doing a great job. Appreciate you. Okay, oh, oh, Chief Bishop. Mine's not a big check, but it's, I mean, it's not a big one, but it's big. Four donations for your dog, that's... Here's cash, you can do that. One, this is from Supernatural Resources, and next anonymous donation from Susan Long. Very good. Thank you, sir. And I do want to thank those citizens of Longview, the businesses that are stepping up and donating to our causes that we're asking you to, and showing your support for our community as well. Thank you very much. We're now to the consent agenda. Are there any items the council would like to pull off for separate discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
Move, approve.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're to action items. We'll consider action item A, consider an ordinance submitting Chapter 64 of the Longview City Code to address mobile food units conducting business in the city parks. Mr. Karen.
Before he starts, Mayor, could I make a few preparatory comments?
Absolutely.
Thank you much. Both the park's subcommittee of the task force spent a lot of hours looking at this subject of mobile food units in our parks, as did the full task force. We received a lot of input from user groups of the brick-and-mortar concession stands at all of these meetings. And because of the interest in it, I asked Scott in his presentation to give us a feel for all the options that were discussed, and not just the one that was recommended by the full task force. So you're going to get the full flavor of all of the options. So Scott?
All right. Thank you for allowing me to present this issue to you guys tonight. And as Mr. Moore mentioned, we kind of started off with these questions. And the basic premise, if mobile food units are going to be allowed in parks, how would that, how would we do that, and what would it look like? And so these were kind of the things that we reviewed as we went through the different areas. And as I go through this, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It may be easier to wait to the end, because I may be able to answer some of your questions as I go along, because I know you may have some specific ones about specific parks or those kind of things. And so I may be able to answer some of those as we get through the whole thing. So the basic thing involving the mobile food units themselves and allowing them in parks is we had to make sure that they were a part of the city of Longview, and they met all the ordinances and everything that was in place to allow them to operate within the city prior to allowing them within the park. So we certainly have that. But then also, they have to provide insurance, make sure that they have insurance themselves to cover us in case there are any incidents that would occur within a park. Beyond that, we took a look at what the different subcommittees from the Mobile Food Unit Task Force took a look at. And these were some of the areas that they reviewed. You know, where could they be located? How many parking spots? How close to a bathroom? All of those considerations. And so the main thing, when we're looking at the park side of things, is, all right, where can they operate? Where will you allow them to be? And so these are the main considerations when we took a look at that. And when we took a look at all of those different items, these were the 11 parks that were identified. And, you know, when you take a look at these, they're separated from residential areas. They have enough parking. They have bathrooms accessible. They allow for the ease of in and out traffic and all those kind of things. And so not all of our parks met those criteria, but these 11 did. And so that was our premise, is, all right, if we're going to allow them in parks, meeting all the other requirements that are in our ordinances, these parks would appear to meet those same ordinances. So that was what we've taken a look at to start. The main point, when we take a look at park, where they would be located within the parks, though, is we would have designated parking spots. And I think that's an area that many people may not have understood, is, all right, if you let them in a parking lot, they can just park wherever they want. Well, if we're going to permit them to be in a parking lot, then we have to make sure, and they're going to pay for that spot, we have to make sure that they have a spot available when they pull up to that parking lot. So what we did is, I came up with a couple of maps, and it may be a little bit hard to see in the colors, but as an example, Broughton Park is one that we had identified. And so if we were to allow a mobile food unit to operate, we wouldn't just allow it to be at any parking spot it wanted or wherever it wanted, because we have to first accommodate the patrons of the park itself. So the main activities are the rec center, the splash pad when it's open during the summer, but then also the softball field. And so we have to locate, have the ability to locate that mobile food unit a little bit removed from those locations. And so that's a consideration of the general park users as a whole. And so what we have identified in this park, and it's not anything written in stone, it's just kind of talking to our staff and looking at things, the designated spot that we would have in this location is kind of in this, right in this corner. The pavilions are down over here, and this is where the main activity is, and that's parking lot. So we wanted to have it a little bit away from that activity. So another park that we took a look at was Lear Park. And again, when you take a look at Lear Park, it's 180 acres. And so it's not a simple place to be able to operate anything on a small basis. And so when we take a look at that, we have Kids View Parking Lot. And where we, again, where we would say the best place to be able to operate that mobile food unit, if that is a location that is okay, would be away from the main area, which the playground's right here. And as you can see from the cars that are currently parked in there, they're all over here. So we want to have them a little bit removed from it. Down in the softball side of things, we would locate those in those area. And so just to give you an idea of how far away this is from the concession stands, because I think that is part of the area and part of concern of some folks, is this is about 1,000 feet away from the concession areas, the concession stands that currently operate out there. It's about 400 feet to this bathroom right here. So those are some of the considerations that we had. Okay, if they're going to operate... Okay, if they're gonna operate in parks, that's fine, but we need to designate spots for them. And so when we do that, we did that, we tried to, uh, consider a lot of different things, not just, alright, just let them, let them go there. Another key component of what we've placed in the ordinance is the ability to restrict them or to, to not allow them to operate up to five days a month. And, and this again is a little bit of accommodation for those that operate concession stands. There is a concern of, of, uh, those that do operate the, the youth association concession stands, that it may in, impact their operations. And so what we put in there is a provision to disallow them up to five days a month. Essentially, if we said, alright, the Saturdays, you couldn't operate on the Saturdays, then any other time of the week, that would be okay. Saturdays, the reason we chose five days is because of, every once in a while, a month has five Saturdays. That's kinda why we chose five. Uh, and so we wanted to, to get to that number. Also, Saturdays are the busiest days for all of the, the associations and their concession stands. So, that's what, that was one of our considerations there. The second part is that we would allow mobile food units to operate in any park if they had a special use permit. So, if they had a special event, then essentially they're kinda taking over that park as, as, and, and using it for their entire special event. So, we would allow them to operate, but they would still have to have the access fee that we'll talk about in a little bit, and they would still have to, whoever reserves that park would have to make, pay all of those fees associated with it. Okay? So, I think those are two key components of what we've placed in there. So, the recommendations, as Mr. Moore mentioned, um, the, the Park Advisory Board recommended not allowing them in any, um, any park. The task force itself said we should allow those in four parks. And so we started with eleven, Park Board said, uh, zero, the task force came up with these four. And, and the reason they came up with these four is there are no concession stands that operate in these four. And so that was, uh, how they came about, uh, from that perspective. And then lastly, of course, you know, what's it gonna cost to be able to operate within a park? And, um, first of all, there would be an annual access fee, so if you wanna get into a park, you would have to pay a five hundred dollar fee. Then you would have to have a reservable site, just like we do any pavilion. So, it would be fifty dollars per, per day, per site. So, first you'd have to pay the five hundred dollars overall, and then you wanna say, okay, I wanna be at Broughton, oh, you need to pay us fifty dollars for that day, for that site. So, you would tell us, and that would allow us then to know if there are, if we were gonna say, hey, you can't operate on this day. So, um, the concession review fee is, if for some reason I've missed something and somebody says, you know what, I really think you should take a look at this parking lot again, 'cause I think it would be a good one, um, that would allow us to, to, to be able to re-stripe it and do those kinda things, to take a look at it and come back to council for all the staff time that would be involved in doing that. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Scott, how much, um, money do those concession stands raise for the different programs? And what does the money go for?
Um, I'm not, I, I don't know for sure how much they generate for the concession stands or for the associations. They do submit to us financial records, but we don't really look at all of them. I know for last year, I, I believe that, uh, baseball had, uh, received five thousand dollars for their operations, and then they had to remit to us about fifteen hundred dollars for the concession fee. So, I don't know exactly on every single one of them how much the concessions generate. They're run a little bit differently amongst the associations. Some of them do them themselves, some of them, uh, have a third-party operator that, that does them. So, we don't have any of the gross sales numbers for, for any of those. We may be able to find that on the girls' softball, 'cause they do their own concessions, uh, and then also on football.
And so what do they use the money for? To pay the fees for the, to be in the, in baseball or softball or whatever, or?
Yeah, I, they can use it however they so choose. And so that, I think that the associations typically use them as a fundraiser, an additional fundraiser to offset the, the operational cost of offering those programs. Uh, and then also some of them use that as, kind of as their scholarship. So, if somebody can't afford to play baseball, softball, soccer, football, then they use some of those proceeds to be able to do that as well.
I have had people from my district call and say, why can't I, uh, buy food from a, a food truck? Why do I have to be, go to the concession stands? And so, I mean, I can understand their point of view, but I, with the kinda money that you're talking about being raised, it's...
Right. And that, we've tried to balance the consideration of all involved, the general park user, those that would be interested in having, uh, a, a mobile food unit, uh, as well as these, you know, so we, we, in the association. So, it's, it's a delicate balance between all of those because they have different interests. Uh, but I, I think what we've tried to do again is, is strike that balance so that, that we can accommodate, uh, all users of, of parks. And, and we want to, you, we wanna utilize mobile food units, I guess, from my perspective, to draw people into our parks. Uh, that's, we want people to use the, the parks that we have available, and if so, and so if mobile food units decide that, hey, that's a good place for me to be, then that's gonna ma, possibly draw people to a park that they may never have visited before, and that's what we all want.
One other thing, are the concession stands, they're not open every day of the week, are they?
No, sir. They're, they're required to be open when there are, uh, at least two games scheduled.
So, we're going to exclude them from, say, Lear around the splash pads all the time, even though the concession stands aren't open?
Uh, that's, that's the recommendation.
The way, the way that the ordinance is currently written, yes.
And I, I would ask council revisit the subject of allowing them in all eleven of the parks, um, that were initially, uh, listed. You remember, all along, we've talked about that, uh, our job is to regulate health and safety and not competition. And I, I certainly have and, and feel the concern of the associations, but, um, I, I would like us to consider opening it back up to the eleven parks that were listed. Frankly, we want to encourage the, uh, the development of our food truck industry in our community. Parks are an ideal venue to do that. Um, frankly, we need all the money we can get, and fifty dollars a day and five hundred a year is certainly gonna help. Um, and the five days out of a month, uh, prohibition, if you will, on being available, take Stamper, for example, the Little League Football plays on Saturdays. Um, so in effect, if the Little League Football group doesn't want food trucks in there, they can, they can prohibit them for the entire season. Um, I read in the paper today that there's a, a tournament going on at, at Lear with forty-eight teams. Uh, if the various associations wanted to save up their five days and use three of them for this tournament, so food trucks aren't there for the forty-eight teams, uh, that's their call. Uh, but I, I would like us to talk about that again and consider opening it up.
Counsel, timeout. Before we dis, having discussion, I have a speaker card that needs to be, to speak before we continue our discussions.
Okay.
Okay? Lacey McCray?
Good evening, Council. My name is Lacey McCray.
I'm sorry.
And I am here to provide support for food trucks in all parks, and, um, I'm gonna discuss my, um, opinion. So, thank you for your time and commitment to the city. Um, I wanna provide my support for all food trucks in parks. We have over thirty parks in Longview, and only four potentially may be on the agenda today, but I see the greater good that can come of having open access to all parks with appropriate amenities. Um, I'd also like to raise some concerns about some of the oppositions with food trucks and youth sports and concession stand operators. First and foremost, I wanna say that, um, the Longview Softball Association, um, had a very positive impact on my life. I grew up in Hallsville, I was able to get a waiver in order to play in Longview. That was when softball was, or fast pitch was starting to be competitive, and there just wasn't an opportunity in Hallsville. So, I'm very grateful for that. Um, I went on to play softball internationally, um, and also at the college level. I got my bachelor's in kinesiology, my master's in sports psychology, and my PhD in sport management. So, youth sport had a very large impact on my life, and I think it's really important, and I want to provide support, um, for our youth, youth programs to continue to be successful. Um, so I wanted to recognize them. I also wanna start the conversation of how we can facilitate more growth in our youth sport programs. I have reviewed the financials of the youth, um, sport leagues, and with good intentions, I'd like to provide an opinion that we can operate food trucks with parks, um, that have appropriate amenities, including parks that operate youth sport concessions. Secondly, um, I wanted to give support for the entrepreneurs. Um, my parents are first-generation entrepreneurs, and I learned a lot from them. I saw the struggle, I saw their, um, mistakes, I saw that they learned from those mistakes and that they are great business people because of that now. And so, um, as soon as y'all approved the food trucks in Longview, um, I was on Facebook and one of, uh, acquaintances from high school said, whenever I get married, me and my husband are gonna do a food truck. And I thought, wow, that's great. And I don't know if she will or not, but for me, it was a point that she's taken a step forward in her journey through entrepreneurship. And I would like to provide as many opportunities as, as we can for people like that, um, including the city of Longview, including parks. Um, I will say that parks provide a really, um, unique quality of life to the community, and I think that's important, and it's my opinion that we should open up the thirty-plus parks in Longview as best we can. So, I have some concerns specifically related to some comments that have been made in the newspaper, um, that are negative or that it may negatively affect the youth sport leagues. As a courtesy to the sport leagues, um, I do not feel it appropriate in a setting to call out the numbers and explain specifically what the issues are. But I will say generally, these are some concerns that do not necessarily, in my opinion, indicate that food trucks will negatively affect them. First of all, I think the city should make policy that helps with concession, that lists the concessions and revenues. Um, when I looked at the, at the concessions, not all tournaments are months provided a profit for the youth sport leagues, meaning that, that it was costing them money to operate some of these. And so I found, I found that interesting. Um, also, the third parties that operate, um, to my understanding, give only twenty percent to the youth leagues, so maybe reorganizing the youth leagues in the way that they do their own concessions would be more beneficial to the youth, the youth leagues. Instead of the third party making large sums of money, the youth leagues could benefit from taking that back over. I know I'm running short on time, so I'm gonna finish this up. Um, I think that it would be beneficial for the financial reports to have specific labeling of the gross sales, the cost and, the cost of supplies and the labor. Um, we could also prohibit food trucks from operating on weekends, that they host their own tournaments, which is already in the agenda or in the policy. Um, I think there's a couple of other suggestions, but in general, I just want to say, as a citizen of Longview, I think this is a great opportunity for a number of different people. Um, and I hope that this is helpful for not only our current generation of youth sports, but our future generation of youth sports as well, including the entrepreneurs that are gonna come out of this movement that has started in Longview.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now at this time, I have no more speaker cards on this item. This man, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Would you please fill out a card when you're finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Megan Tyler, um, good evening, members of council. I just wanted to, uh, speak on the food truck issue if I could. I support food trucks being in parks. I think it's a liberty issue at this point, and I'm for all, I'm all for entrepreneurs coming to the parks, selling their items, selling their goods, whatever they would like to sell, and just letting people have a free choice. And that's what it's about. It's about freedom of choice, and I really appreciate you guys being supportive of food trucks coming into town, and I really would like people to see that food trucks being in parks would not necessarily be competing with the parks already there, the concession stands that are there. Uh, from my understanding, and I don't know if it's, I don't participate in the whole parks thing a whole lot, so it's, I'm not that informed, unfortunately. It's a, it's a competition issue, 'cause a lot of that money goes back to the kids, and I, I do understand that, but I feel like I would be more likely to go there and participate in stuff like that if we weren't stuck eating Frito-Pike concession stands that make me sick, honestly. I can't eat that because I have a, I have an illness that I just, I can't eat junk food like that. So, I feel like food trucks should be a healthier option to some degree, if, if people brought that to the table. Uh, it would be freedom of choice, it would be supporting entrepreneurship in the community, and that's what I'm for, since I'm an entrepreneur at twenty years old. And, uh, I just would hope that everyone could see, including you guys, and pass the ordinance to allow food trucks in parks and support that idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have any other speakers that would like to speak on this before we continue forward? Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, time, you can discuss all you'd like now.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allen?
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like, I'd like to start off first. I think there's been a little misconception on the financial part of this. Um, the, now, I'm gonna exclude the Girls Softball Association, 'cause that's a different operation. They don't operate under the same rules that all the other, uh, concessionaires operate under. The program, I understand, talking from, uh, Scott, Mr. Karen, is the associations bid out, so to speak, who wants to operate the concession stands. The associations do. The person that operates that concession stand pays twenty percent of his gross revenue each day to that association, and the association helps the young children in their team sports. I mean, it may help them with their uniforms, it may help them with their enrollment, it may even provide enrollment for some of them. So, I think the question here is, if the food trucks are in direct competition with the concession stands, they need to be providing some type of revenue also to the association. Now, the, the question is, do, do they provide a flat fee for operating in competition with a concession stand, or do they provide a percentage of their revenue, which might be kinda hard to keep track of, but at the same time, the person operating the concession stand, how does the association know what the, what the revenue is generated in that concession stand? So, he could use the same type of, uh, circumstances to go to the concession stand and get his twenty percent as he could to go to the food truck and get his twenty percent. I believe that the food trucks need to pay a fee to the association, just as the concession stands do. The question is, do they pay a flat fee or do they pay a percentage fee? I think this is something that, my point, I, I would like to discuss in opening up the parks to where the food trucks, the food trucks will bring in more business. There's no question. You got people going across the street, you got people bringing food from home, you've got, uh, all kinds of, uh, situations, especially where you're playing in a tournament, where you're gonna be out there for more than one game. They're gonna decide ahead of time what they're, where they're gonna get their food for that day, whether they purchase it ahead of time or whatever, 'cause the concession stand do a good job, but the concession stands just have, and I, maybe this is the wrong, they just have snack food. And it's kinda hard, as the lady just spoke, it's kinda hard to live off snack food where the trucks can provide a dinner menu of sorts. I would, my point is, I would like to see some compensation paid to the associations that are operating the tournament at that time that the concession trucks are getting the benefit of. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Um, thank you, staff, for everything that you've done in working on this ordinance. I specifically like the five Saturday exclusion portion. Um, that protects those Little League organizations regardless of costality, whether it's for fundraising or whatever they're utilizing, whatever the funds go toward. Um, I like that, and I, I just kinda wanna make sure that we're on the same page, that hypothetically, if they want food trucks operating on that day and there is something going on, they can allow them to, correct?
Right. And, and I, I think, in any good partnership, what we do is, we, you know, which is what I've tried to do since I've been here, is, is really work with the associations and talk to them and, and reach out and understand their wants and their needs and try to balance that out. And so we would say, okay, you know, here, we need to set the calendar, if you will, for October.
Right.
Yeah, are there any days that you would, you would want us to exclude them from operating? Are there some specific dates? And so we would work with them, because, um, as Mr. Moore mentioned earlier, let's just say we talked to girls' softball, we pick five days a month, and softball says, hey, this tournament's huge, we wanna exclude this Saturday, Sunday.
Right.
And next Saturday, that's fine, you, you know, we don't plan on having anything out there. So, I, we wanna, I think we wanna work with them in association to make sure that, that we're balancing the, the food units themselves, the, the park users, as well as the association.
Right.
So, I think that's a, a balance that we'd have to work out with them.
Flexibility, 'cause we're not here to manage their finances at that, at this point, more so just to set the, the foundation. Um, also, my second, um, question in regard to the food trucks, um... Also, my second question in regard to the food trucks, well, my comment, we are in Longview, this is great for our community, and I just want the citizens to understand, we, I think that we wanna see this happen, and we want any and everything that can generate tax dollars, revenue for our community. But currently, don't we have two mobile units, maybe? How many do we have, actually, that are operating within, or can operate in the city limits?
I don't know. I, two.
We have two in the works. So this is a, we're growing, and so there will be opportunities for us to come back and revisit this as this continues to take off in our community.
Yeah. And I think that's a great point, is that there's nothing to say that in a year, or even less, if we so choose, to come back and say, "You know what, this isn't working out how we would have expected it to," we may need to provide an alteration.
And I do think that we should look at the 11 parks that were initially presented versus four. It'd be great to do all 30, but I don't know how realistic that is with our staff. But the 11, I agree with Councilman Moore.
Some of them don't even have parking lots, and so that becomes an issue.
Is that why they were excluded?
Yes, ma'am. And so, you know, you look at Birdie Park, well, you know.
It's a birdie.
It's a very nice park, however, you know, trying to operate a food truck there.
Right, no space.
Along with park users, I think would be a little bit of a hindrance.
Thank you very much.
Ishihara? Question to make sure I understand something that I didn't know before. So, girls softball is the only one that operates their own concession and keeps 100% of the profits?
No, actually, football does as well.
Okay.
So football and, and girls softball. Soccer, Longview Boys Baseball, and Spring Hill, Dixie Youth, contract with somebody else to provide the concession.
And so the people that are contracting out, a third party is keeping 80% of the profits at those concession stands, and 20% is going to the leagues?
The only arrangement that I know about is baseball. I'm not sure on soccer, or on Spring Hill, what they do in those particular instances. However, I've talked to Mr. Williams with Boys Baseball, and he did tell me that they provide 20% of the gross, the vendor provides 20% of the gross to Longview Boys Baseball, so.
Are there concession stands in Longview where the city runs them and keeps 100% of the profit?
We operate concessions at Longview Swim Center, Ingram Pool, Jack Man, and Hinsley Park.
So, Mr. Allen?
I think percentage is gonna be somewhat of an administrative nightmare for, excuse me, the park staff, thinking, what, an addition, instead of $50 a day, an additional dollar amount that would be remitted to the associations?
I would, yes, I would propose.
Or, I might add, for the city-run concession stands, it would be extra money then in the city coffers.
Yeah, I, yes, I would propose that they pay, right now, it's set up, they'll pay $50 a day fee. I would propose that anytime they're operating at a city park, that they would pay a $75 per day fee. $50 of this would, the $75 would be paid to the city. $50 of this would be retained by the city, and $25 would go to the association operating the activity at that time.
Whether the concession stand is open or not?
Irregardless.
Okay.
If they set up out there in a city park, and they wanna just operate with no activity, then they would pay the city $50, and, well, now, that wouldn't work, because they're not, there's no activity. They set up, if there's an activity going on, they would pay $25. The association would receive $25, the city would receive $50 through a $75 payment to the city.
And the complication, one of the complications in that would be if the concession stands are opening or not. And then, again, Lear Park being the different animal that it is, we have three different vendors essentially that are operating concessions, actually, four, if you include the one we operated, Jack Man. So, the challenge then is, okay, if softball has a tournament, and somebody wants to set up in Kids View, that $25 would then go to softball. If there's softball, soccer, and baseball, do we split that $25 three ways? And so, we can do whatever city council would like for us to do, just want, need a little direction on that, if that's what we so choose.
Here's my concern. We came here tonight to discuss an ordinance we've all have had time to look over and read through, and we've veered a long way from that now. We have a Parks Board that recommended A. We have a task force that recommended B. We're here to vote on C, and now we're discussing D. And I, I can't make the decision without knowing more information. If we're gonna discuss impacting these youth sports, which was not on our table tonight to discuss that, I wanna know more about what the youth sports concession stands are doing. I wanna know where their money's coming from, where it goes, how much it is, what, how's this gonna impact them? Because I think we need to know the entire story before we just start throwing numbers out and saying, "Okay, here, we're gonna do this." Because I can't, I can't do that without having, and I'm not saying you don't know what you're saying, Scott, because you do, but I haven't had time to digest that, and I need, I need time to look at this personally. That's my feeling. Because this is a big issue. This is an issue that will affect our community. And so, we're here to make rational, reasonable decisions, and I'm telling you, I can make a rational, reasonable decision on the ordinance before me, and if you all wanna vote on that, yes or no, I'm prepared to do that. But if you all are looking to change this ordinance into something else, then I need more information before I can proceed forward on that. That's just my opinion.
I think that's very well taken, yes.
I certainly understand your feeling, mayor, but if our job is not to regulate competition, what will that tell us, and what comfort level will that give us?
It's not, it's not, if we're not gonna regulate competition, take away the five days, because your five days are regulating competition. You're saying you can't do it on these five days, that's some level of regulation? I'm not saying that's not inappropriate, I think that's very appropriate. But I would like to know the scope of what's going to take place if we allow them in the parks. I don't have a problem with that if I knew what the ramifications were gonna be. But not knowing that, not knowing exactly what these youth sports concession stands do for each one of these youth sports, I don't know that information. And if, if making this decision is going to hinder some kids getting to be able to play those youth sports, I would be remiss in that unless we could come up with a plan like Mr. Allen has proposed, which I would support as well, if we knew what those parameters were. Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm not saying I disagree with any of it, I would just like to have the information before me in order to make that decision. But that's just, I'm just, my opinion.
Can we propose a delay? I mean, can we propose to study this and bring it back at another session?
We can propose anything we want, but if we want to move forward on this, on this, we have an item on the agenda. I will ask for a motion and a second. If there is one, we will vote on that. If there's no motion and no second, this ordinance will die as it is, and then we can take it from there. That's what council's here to do, is to make decisions based on what our agenda is. So if you all would like to, is there any more discussion on this item? If not, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the ordinance as presented, with the exception of adding the additional seven parks to be allowable for food truck use.
Seven.
There's a motion, a second. All in favor, signal must sing aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a resolution, amend the City of Longview's 2015-16 Fee Resolution for Mobile Food Units. Ms. Hill?
Yes, sir. This will be the final step in allowing mobile food units to come to Longview, and we've also taken the opportunity, since we're amending, requesting the amendment of the fee resolution to add this particular item. We're asking that at Mog Cobb, we're not changing any fees, but we are clarifying, since the city brought the CVB in-house, we're clarifying the way we would like to work in the future to, I guess, incentivize conventions coming to Longview, and we would, at that time, look at the hotel motel revenues, and then perhaps offset their fees to Mog Cobb, to attract them to come to Longview. So that's this one. Building Inspection Section of the Fee Resolution, this adds the $100 CO fee for mobile food units, which is exactly the same as we currently charge for all other bricks and mortar, so they would have to pay the same fee. Within Community Services, the section, we are adding the ability to reserve the two parking lots on Cotton Street that the city owns. The fee would be $50 a day, or $500 annually for Class 1 activities, and these are for profit. And then fees would be waived for Class 2, and these would be organizations that have their IRS tax-exempt designation. So, for example, if a church wanted to have a carnival on the parking lot, they could reserve it with no fees, okay? Within Environmental Health, and this is where the majority of the fees come forth, we are establishing the fees for the mobile food units, and we are also requesting that the late fees for all food establishments and swimming pools increase from 50 to $100. Now, please be aware, we want to increase the fee so we never have to charge it, because when people are late paying their permits, it takes a lot of staff time to track them down and get them to come in and pay. So we're hoping that by increasing the fee, we would never have to charge it, okay? Here are the fees we are recommending for mobile food units. For the unrestricted units, which would be preparing the food on-site, we are requesting a $250 annual fee, and this is the same as a Category 1 bricks and mortar restaurant. For restricted, $200, excuse me, for the limited mobile food units, 75. We would charge a $25 hazardous food variance for mobile food units. This is, for example, if they wanna prepare fish, something like that, it takes a little bit more inspection on our part. Daycare permit, this is some house cleaning of $100. The state just recently updated their publications, and we need to increase the fee to charge for those materials, and then the $100 late fee. And then, this is to put the parks and recreation fees within the fee ordinance. Scott's already discussed this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to table this item until we can discuss further Mr. Allen's idea of possibly amending the $50 a day, and come back at our next council meeting with a resolution that includes possibly, I'm making this motion a lot longer than I meant to. Okay, thanks.
Hold on, hold on. I asked, first of all, Mr. Moore, just a second, I asked for a motion on the original item. Is there a motion on the original item? If not, then, Mr. Moore, you have now made a motion, the second by Ms. Williams.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are now to consider an ordinance creating a new Chapter 20 concerning the operation of credit access businesses. Ms. Ishihara?
I really don't have a planned presentation. I think we have a rather thick stack of cards to start with, so let's go there.
We do have a number of cards to talk about. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have a number of speaker cards here tonight. I will ask that you adhere to your time limits. I will also ask that you speak concisely. We'll just start at the top. She's coming? Okay.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, members. I'm here today to talk about the payday ordinance. I work at the House of Hope, and we have a lot of clients that have had many issues with the payday lending practices here in Longview. I know City of Houston, Texas ordinance, they just passed, and they have legislation that protects the citizens in Houston. I brought that with me. But the main interest that I have is, these payday loan places here in Longview charge anywhere from 911% to 456% to take out a loan. If you have somebody on a fixed income, which we see that is disability, social security, they take out a loan for $1,000, they're gonna end up paying $3,000 plus. If you're on a fixed income, they can't afford it. They don't make their payments, they're paying a $150 late fee, and the loans are reestablished again, and they start all over. That's why our homelessness is happening, and it's increasing for a lot of women here in Longview. So I hope we take this into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sister Helen Johnson?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak out tonight about not only payday loans, but homelessness. Our little payday loan community that has taken over in Longview has increased our homelessness for our women by a major percent. Almost every night at the House of Hope, and my, again, my name is Sister Helen Johnson, and I own and operate the House of Hope, and we house between 45 to 60 women every night, and their only qualifications to come there is to be homeless, have no money, or anyplace else to go and sleep. So in order for us to attempt to keep them off of the streets, it doesn't matter if they have an income of $700 or $800 a month, we bring them in, because we see such an increase in payday loans taking that full amount of money. Today, I have two women in my shelter that have not had paydays, one of the ladies have not had a payday for three months, because she has four payday loans between Kilgore and Longview. Not really sure how that happened, but it's happening. And I have another lady who has not had a payday in two months, because she's missed some payments, and if you get $600 or $700 a month, you can't really live and afford an apartment in Longview anyway. So, I mean, just to speak very honestly, by the time we're paying half of that money back out, $400 a month to a payday loan, then we don't have much left. And we don't mind taking these ladies, this is our life's mission, this is exactly what we're gonna do, we love it. However, if there's any way that you guys here in Longview, that are the authorities, that are the powers-to-be, could help us put some kind of cap on the amount that they can borrow, how they can borrow it, it would just be a great blessing, and it also would help the homeless population here in Longview. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Marissa Gardner, and I come from both sides of the payday industry. I have been in this industry now for 13 years. But at one point in time, me going in, needing a payday loan, I didn't overextend myself. We get this bad rep of twisting people's arms when they walk in the door. We don't know their story, they don't share their story, but they make us look like the bad guys. And I feel that capping us, I feel like it's more their responsibility of how much they take from us, instead of saying that we're the predators. A lot of people walk in, we don't know their story. I'm not obligated to ask their story, but I do try to help fix their story. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bridgette Stewart? Some of y'all's writing is worse than mine.
Good evening, council. I was supposed to be a doctor, but it just didn't work.
It's not what it's cracked up to be.
I have been in this industry for almost 17 years. My name is Bridgette Stewart, I'm a regional manager, payday loan company. manner that's going to benefit both people. We have a slew of people here today that will lose their jobs. That's not going to help the economy of Longview, I'm sure it's not. So just please think about what you're doing, and just say no to the ordinance the way it is today. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Megan Tyler.
Good evening. Second time up here, okay. I am for the ordinance. I have, I grew up on the south side of Longview, and I wouldn't say poverty, but I grew up poor. I have seen my family get into trouble behind payday ordinance, or the payday lending and the cash stores and all of that. They were not able to pay back the money because of the interest rates, because of how much they borrowed. And I understand people have the freedom to go and do things, whatever they want to do, but when it comes back into the community and these people get into trouble when they can't pay back the money, and then they resort to, like, illegal activities to try to pay it back, such as selling drugs and doing other things to try to pay back money that they don't really have in the first place. I've seen it happen. I disagree with that. These people, sometimes you just don't really know what you're getting into, and I think that comes in a time where the government has to, or council or city government or whatever, has to come in and say, hey, we want to try to help you. This is wrong. Can we provide better money management for you, or help you with money management classes? Maybe the city could have a class on that, like at the library or something. There's other alternatives there to not get people in trouble with money that they cannot really pay back, with the interest rates are extremely high. It's just, it's a bad thing. I mean, and it comes back down to the economy, and the people are going to be more upset in the long run if they can't pay back the money. And you borrow money that you don't have, and that's not going to be a good idea. That's kind of all I have to say about the payday lending thing. On a side note, since this is my last time up here, I wanted to introduce the young Republicans of Greck County. I am the PR person for them, and I would invite each member of council, if you guys don't mind speaking at maybe one of our meetings, to just kind of let us know who you are. These are younger kids that are in the city that want to do something, want to help change the city. And I know, I don't know each individual member's identity as far as where they lean, whether it's Republican or Democrat. To me, that really doesn't matter because we're all part of this community, and we want to help change it for the better no matter what, anyway. I would encourage especially you, Mr. Mack, that you come and speak. I would definitely like to hear you there. And I hope that each one of you kind of, if I can get in contact with you, and we can schedule a time, that you could come and speak at one of our meetings. I'm sure we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Kaye Williams.
Good evening, counsel. How are y'all today? I just come today to do my testimony, my personal experience with getting a payday loan. Back in 2011, I was homeless. I was 27 years old, two kids, going through a divorce, stuck out on the street with nowhere to go. Tried to go to my bank, get a loan. My credit wasn't good enough. I needed money to put down for an apartment. So what was I supposed to do, and where was I supposed to go? I turned to Thrifty Loans. They were the ones who helped me when I was in a financial bind. At the time, I worked in the industry for six years, knowing that it would be me standing on the opposite side of the counter getting assistance instead of giving assistance. We as, and the people working the payday industry have been called many names in which would be unnecessary to go into by outsiders who probably have never had to get a $300 payday advance. Never once did I think of the lady as anything but her willingness to help me when I was in a need and was going through a financial crisis. My story may be different from her story, or his story, or her tax bracket, or my tax bracket. But what I can say is that we all had the same unexpected circumstance. I think it's very unjust and very unfair for someone who hasn't been in my shoes to come through and put an ordinance on how to spend my money. I never felt like I was being taken advantage of. I was responsible, adult, one who felt the need to renew my loan as many times as I needed until I decided to pay off, whether it be three times or seven times. That was my decision. I recently read an article that said this ordinance does not outlaw payday loans, but curbs the predatory activities of a minimally regulated industry. Per this ordinance, what I've seen and read has been a totally different outcome. So my thoughts, are some views one-sided, or are they just unjustifiable than mine? All businesses come with good and bad feedback, but does it make it right to put an ordinance on it? That leaves me very concerned. And to think, is it really about what the people want, or is it about what's best for the people? I vote no to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brandon Johnson.
Coming? Thank you. So many people had to walk from the police station. Good evening, counsel, and mayor, city manager. I guess you're Robert Ray?
Yes, sir.
City secretary, my friend. I'm here on behalf of the NAACP, but mostly to speak out in support of this ordinance. I have heard the remarks, and I've seen a lot of these stickers for the people who are against this ordinance, and I understand that people need a hand up in tough times. I also understand, when you're talking about 400% to 800% interest, as these loans increase from the second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth renewal, or refinance, or re-whatever that folks do, sometimes folks don't realize how that impacts their lives. If you're getting $1,000 a paycheck, let's just say that, and you go and you get a $1,000 payday loan, if you need a payday loan, then evidently, whatever's happening with that $1,000 hasn't been spent correctly. Now, I understand tough times. I understand getting a down payment on an apartment or a house. I understand when you have a car breakdown, and you don't have a friend or family member around to give you 500 bucks to get your transmission fixed, that you have to go somewhere to get that. I just don't believe that the payday places, that I believe are also predatory lenders, are that option. If I were to go to a loan shark in Vegas in the '60s and '70s, they would only charge me 50%. Some of them would only charge 100%. But 4, 5, 6, 7, and 800%, maybe we need to do more education. Maybe we need to learn about how to access finances through our credit unions. Maybe we need to bring in micro-loan management companies that give you those loans for less percent. Maybe people might lose their jobs. But we just gave, or at least Zonta Club gave a check to the chief for sex trafficking. And I know this may be harsh, but that's going to affect the pimp on the street. He's going to lose some jobs, and some people need to lose if they're in an industry that's taking advantage of people. It's just that simple. You cannot say that we are not here as governmental officials, that we are not supposed to help the people in the most need. The Constitution says, there's somebody missing Constitution. The Constitution is for the people. And if people are being taken advantage of, just because they don't know it doesn't make it right. So if you're taken advantage of, that's what city, county, state, and federal government is supposed to do. And for people like me, if it wasn't for the federal government, we wouldn't have the opportunity, or at least I wouldn't have the opportunity, to speak before you. Because at the Constitution, I was three-fifths of a person, so the Constitution isn't 100% correct all the time. So having said that, I would like for you to consider passing this ordinance. It doesn't take away the payday lending, but it limits the number of times you can renew, and it limits the amount that you can get. If you make $1,000, 250, okay? And if you need some more money, pay that 250 off and get some more money. But we don't need to put people, or keep putting people, in a predicament where they're hurting themselves and they don't even know it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the counsel for letting me speak today. My name's Colin McElroy. And today I'd like to speak about the title and payday ordinance. I can't express how important this industry is in your town, and I can't express the need for the industry. But consider yourself lucky if you've never needed that lender of last resort. You know, because in today's world, only 30% of the people, 30% of people have nothing. They don't have a dollar. 60% don't have $1,000 in their pocket. The average American is $15,000 in credit card debt, and every American has been in an emergency situation. Okay? We all wish, we all wish that the majority of people could go to a bank to get their financing. We all wish that. Okay? But that's not the case. Okay? Needs take priority over wants. If I want something, okay, I should be able to go to a bank and get it. But if I need something, okay, you can't always do that. I can, I can want a car, and I can go to a bank to get it. But if I need a car, I might need to take out a title loan. I can want new shoes, but I need to eat. I can want to go to the club, but I need to pay my bills. You can want to pay off your credit card, but you need to pay the minimum balance. That is the truth. Okay? You can owe money and credit cards, okay, and not pay your payment, but guess what? You're going to have to pay an increased interest on the entirety of the $15,000 that the average person has. It's, it's common sense to take out a loan, to pay your balance, so you don't have to accrue all these fees. It's, it's, an industry that you're trying to regulate is needed in this town. It is needed. Okay? I need to go to work, so I got to get my tire fixed. Okay? I need electricity. I need help. Okay? When someone complains to you about this industry, you have to ask them, why didn't they come to you for the loan? Why are they coming to me for the loan? Okay? Is it because maybe you wouldn't have gave it to them in the first place? Or maybe because they're embarrassed to ask you? Or maybe they didn't think you had the money? But regardless, when somebody comes to me and asks me for money, I can't discriminate because somebody else knows better. Okay? I have to treat everybody equally, everybody. Okay? When you come in and you have a job, and you have a bank account, then I have to look at you like I look at everybody else, no matter what anybody else says. And these people need a shot. Everybody needs an equal chance. These are emergency shots. These are your last shot sometimes. These are your only shot. And the question is, is when this is your last shot, this is sometimes what is needed to keep all that you have left. Seriously. And I can't help but to ask myself, who is this going to help? It's not going to help the employees of this town who are going to go possibly unemployed, competing with all the other people who are unemployed. It's not going to help real estate owners or people who collect rent when all these vacant lots appear and no one has the ability to pay rent, and the property tax, property value goes down, rent value goes down, genderfication begins. What's, what is the point? Property taxes will fall. It's like, it's not beneficial to local industry to basically push out the small guys and bring in the big guys. Okay? There's absolutely nothing that this council can do to keep from forcing the citizens to go online and to take up lending from people who are going to charge higher fees. That's the truth. They're going to charge higher fees. There's nothing you can do about it, nothing. All you're going to do is basically push somebody into having to pay more. That is predatory legislation. That is what that is. That is forcing somebody to do something that you can't do. And it's shameful. But, you know, I can understand why a lawyer would get up here and want to, you know, get all this amped up, and maybe hopefully give somebody a bill one day. And I'm sure that the city of Longview has the people and the money in place, pro bono workers, to pay for this. I'm sure that y'all want to fight this legislation. But we all know it's not going to be cheap for anybody. I'm sad to see a nonprofit come up here and speak, knowing little about the industry, but while the same fact is, our third-party lenders are funding a lot of their operations. Our third-party lenders are good people, period. Okay? And, and to think that I would ever press for regulation, for goodwill, because there's a CEO and they make a profit, and they co-relate to areas of poverty, is ludicrous. It is absolutely ludicrous to think that a town needs something, but you can't do it because they co-relate to where, like, I, I can't, I can't express, the bottom line is, I grew up with a single father on the outskirts of the ghetto. I lived in a trailer park after I graduated college. I moved my $10,000 trailer, which I still live in today, to my house. Okay? I drove a car, my last car, for 12 years, and it still runs in my parking lot. So I guess my question is...
Mr. McElroy? I'm sorry, your, your time is up, sir, and I have to make, be the same for everybody, okay?
I do what I can.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm proud of it, and I'm proud to help people.
Thank you very much. Everyone, please understand, when the beat, when the buzzer goes off, your time is up tonight, okay? We have a lot to go through. Vic Verma.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council. I am here to express my strong support for the proposed City of Longview payday lending ordinance. Currently, Texas has no caps on payday and auto title loan charges. When compared, charges, sorry. When compared to other states, Texas is one of a handful of exceptions. Most states have imposed caps. To date, the Texas legislature has shown no interest in addressing the implementation of reasonable regulations on the industry and ensuring fair lending practices. They have left local communities to deal with the negative impacts that result from a lack of regulation. Fortunately, Councilwoman Kristen Ishihara has stepped up and introduced an ordinance for Longview. It follows in the footsteps of 31 other cities throughout the state who have implemented their own ordinances. I applaud Councilwoman Ishihara for her leadership on this issue. I also applaud Councilwoman Casha Williams for her strong comments previously when this topic was discussed here in council. The details of payday lending are not pretty. The average APR for a 14-day payday loan per the Baptist General Convention of Texas is 608%. This is a rate that, as my friend Brandon said, would make loan sharks envious. In addition, 52% of people cannot pay back the loan in two weeks. This creates a cycle of debt. In 2014, roughly 847 vehicles per week were repossessed on average. And millions of dollars every year are paid to payday lending and title ordinances in the amount of fees. In some cases, churches and nonprofits ended up paying these fees to help Texas families who cannot pay them. Is this really what we want important organizations in our community to provide funding for as opposed to other projects? I would hope not. As we deal with the issue of poverty and helping those less fortunate, we talk about helping people, yet the actions of our government often tell another story. When we talk about helping people by increasing the minimum wage to a reasonable level that people can live out, Texas says no. When we talk about helping people by providing them healthcare through a Medicaid expansion, Texas says no. But when the topic is giving people a crushing cycle of debt at the hands of payday lenders, Texas says yes. There are indeed consequences of the actions of Texas legislators and our statewide leaders, our lack thereof. And in short, what are we saying through these above actions is that our state does not want to help these, help the poor, and is willing to turn a blind eye to those who wish to create harm for them. and title ordinances in the amount of fees. In some cases, churches and nonprofits ended up paying these fees to help Texas, Texas families who cannot pay them. Is this really what we want important organizations in our community to provide funding for as opposed to other projects? I would hope not. As we deal with the issue of poverty and helping those less fortunate, we talk about helping people, yet the actions of our government often tell another story. When we talk about helping people by increasing the minimum wage to a reasonable level that people can live out, Texas says no. When we talk about helping people by providing them healthcare through a Medicaid expansion, Texas says no. But when the topic is giving people a crushing cycle of debt at the hands of payday lenders, Texas says yes. There are indeed consequences of the actions of Texas legislators and our statewide leaders or lack thereof. And in short, what are we saying through these above actions is that our state does not want to help these, help the poor and is willing to turn a blind eye to those who wish to create harm for the poor. With respect to the minimum wage and Medicaid expansion, Longview does not have the power to address these issues. They are at the mercy of the state of Texas and the federal government. But with respect to payday lending ordinances, Longview does have the power to address the issue. If the state of Texas will not do its duty, then Longview must. And in the process, Longview will be a leader and an example for other East Texas communities to follow. A concern that's been brought up is that the new ordinance creates quote-unquote "big government." But what does that mean? Drugs are regulated under the law and more strictly than payday lenders, even if this ordinance passes. Should we say that cocaine and heroin should be legal because people know what they're getting into? Well, that is the argument that opponents of the payday lending ordinance are using. If that's, if it is not an acceptable argument for legalizing cocaine and heroin, then why is it an acceptable argument with respect to the payday lending ordinance? I would also add that the City of Longview decided to build a multimillion-dollar animal shelter that will be owned and operated by the city. This was not the only option for the city, but it is the option that the city chose. If the concern is about quote-unquote "big government," well, the animal shelter is a large government project that passed with the unanimous vote of the city council. This is by no means a critique of the project at all. It is a simple statement of fact. Extensive government involvement and investment is a defining characteristic of the new animal shelter. So if the concern is the slippery slope of big government, well, that barrier has been crossed and has been crossed on multiple occasions. So why should that be an argument against the payday lending ordinance? In closing, it should be noted that there are many organizations that support the implementation of payday lending ordinances. One notable organization is the Baptist General Convention of Texas, which is a very large faith-based organization that we all know. In addition, there are other nonprofit alternatives to payday lending across the state that have achieved success, such as the Community Loan Center in Dallas. This can occur in Longview as well. So let's move forward with an ordinance that serves the common good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Lawrence?
Hi, my name is David Lawrence. And first off, before I get into anything here, people keep talking about, we've got a broad range of APRs here, guys. 400% all the way to 900%. Let me tell you how we run our business. If you come in and say you make, you have a thousand dollars, you make a thousand dollars on your paycheck. We're, I just heard a guy that was for your ordinance tell you that $250 would be the suitable amount to let them borrow. Well, that's exactly how much we let them borrow. Nobody, you can't come into any of our stores and have a thousand-dollar paycheck and borrow a thousand dollars. We have to be able to get our money back, or we'll, or we'll go out of business. Any person in their right mind would know if all this person makes a thousand dollars, they're not gonna be able to afford their utility bill, their car note, their, the food on their table, kids' clothes, and our thousand-dollar loan. That's ludicrous. So before I got into anything that I've prepared, I wanted to let you know that. Most of our loans are below $500. On a $500 loan, you're gonna owe us $112 in interest. On a $100 loan, you're gonna owe us $20, and these are average numbers. That is not what I would call predatory lending at all. What I came here to talk about today were some of the unintended consequences of the ordinance. Right now, by the way, I heard that Colleen, Texas, passed an ordinance about two or three weeks ago. I heard today that that ordinance has already been repealed. Other cities that have passed these ordinances have been sued by credit access businesses and trade groups, resulting in a loss of time and resources for those local governments. Well, that's nothing nobody wants, but I promise you guys, it's gonna happen. There's a huge title loan lender in town. I don't even see them here because I think they're just ready to go ahead and turn in paperwork. You'll probably get it tomorrow if it passes. Not a single one of us want that lawsuit, but almost every company here has donated to some of these other communities that have payday loan, payday loan stores that have passed ordinances. Every one of us, including myself, have donated money to help fight those lawsuits. No one ever wins a lawsuit of that type of magnitude besides the lawyers. You guys know that. Once you start spending money, it's no one wins but the lawyer. Bar, if the ordinance passes, borrowers will be forced to turn to unregulated, unlicensed, online lenders who typically charge 30% higher rates than we do already. And, and you're still not even at the points where some of these people are talking about as far as interest rates. Many of the online lenders are partnered with Indian tribes, which completely circumvent Texas law. So they can charge you any amount they want to charge you. This ordinance will definitely harm the City of Longview more than it's gonna help. Our stores, our stores in our city will have rental tax revenue decrease. The City of Longview, most of our stores will have to close and all those people will have to look for new jobs. Customer, I heard somebody talk about customer repossession. Well, those are probably the repossession for banks. Those were probably repossession for the, all these car lots that are up and down Longview. And those guys are charging higher interest rates than we are. And nobody's trying to regulate those guys. Let's see. Effectively, most of our businesses, to try to stay open in your city, will abide by the ordinance. Will have to, to abide by this ordinance, will have to accrue higher operating costs and serious decreases in revenue. This is only gonna result in passing that back to the borrowers. In a city that's trying to help protect, that's only gonna hurt. Most people think that our government doesn't do a very good job of regulating our industry. Well, today, I wish I could've got some of you guys on the phone to come down to my office because I got audited by the OCCC. He stayed in there all day long and was nitpicking down to the last little interest rate. I owe somebody a dollar. Not predatory lending. We had a glitch in our system, I owe somebody a dollar and eight cents. I'm more than happy to pay that dollar and eight cents back. The OCCC is very, very thorough and they're very good at what they do. They look at both sides of the story and they regulate us properly. I would, I would let our industry be regulated to those that understand it, not then just to sit here for a couple of hours, or for three or four hours, and listen to the people that don't really know what they're talking about.
Lyndal McAllister?
I'm Lyndal McAllister, and I facilitated a Getting Ahead class for some of you. We heard several of them speak earlier. For people who are wanting to get out of poverty and become self-sufficient. I've also worked with adults and children from poverty most of my adult life. Most of the people that I have known through this initiative have had to use payday lenders and have ended up with significant debt. While it's important for people to have access to these types of funds, most of them do not realize going in how much interest is going to be charged and how those loans are gonna be renewed over and over again. So people who are already in poverty are, become father in debt and, and discouragement. In Gregg County, the poverty rate is 23%. So I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people who worry that if they speak up, that there may be some kind of retribution in terms of their being able to access funds when they need them as well. We're not talking about shutting down payday lenders. We're talking about limiting the predatory practices. And if you'll, any of the financial literacy curriculums that are reputable, call payday lenders predatory lenders. There's a reason for that. So one person said to me recently, just through Newgate, "It's hard to dream when all you see is nightmares." And it's just that whole thing of, once people get into this financial debt situation, it's very hard to get out. It just goes on and on. So as 31 other cities in Texas, we would support, I would ask you to support a, an ordinance like this that, that helps people in our community. I think about for my own family, we are bothered if we have to pay, you know, the credit card rates of up to 25% on credit cards. We're talking about credit, we're talking about interest rates of several hundred, as has been mentioned, 3%, 400% and higher on these loans. So I, I'd ask for your support in voting in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
April Brown?
Good evening. My name is April Brown. And I too, like several others here, have been on both sides of the fence on payday loans. Years ago, I got divorced, single mother, child of my own. Did get remarried, but in a position in the industry, the economy was going downhill. I needed help, and I found my way to a payday loan. They not only never let me get overextended, they never let me get behind. They were honest and respectful and always helped me, no matter what. I would recommend it any day of the week. Now that I do work for one, I do not let my customers get overextended. I have a very solid base, and if there's ever a problem, I'm always there to help. Thank you, and I ask that you please vote no against this ordinance.
Kelly Hitekamp?
Counsel? Mayor, City Manager, good evening. My name is Kelly Hitekamp. I'm a family law attorney of practice in East Texas. I didn't even know what a payday loan was until my clients started disclosing it to me. And they didn't really disclose it to me. What would happen is when we would get towards the end of a divorce, I would see this tremendous debt lined out. These are people that are working. These are nurses and firefighters and folks in the oil field. And I would ask them about this debt, and they would feel overwhelmed with embarrassment that they'd gotten themselves into such a pickle. And they educated me on how this thing snowballs so quickly. What I have found in my profession is that most folks are a dual-income household. And they are surprised when they find out that their spouse is having an affair. They're surprised when they find out their spouse is walking out and leaving them with children and now just one income. They're desperate for money. I was born into poverty. I was adopted into privilege. I can never forget where I would be if it wasn't for a financially generous father. So when I talk to these clients, I can only imagine. I've never lived what they're living. But I watched them struggle because in a family case, you're looking at car notes. You have to pay your car note. You have to have a car if you're gonna transport your children. It's something that the court considers when they're deciding who receives the children. You have to have a place to live. Most of my clients don't want to move in with their parents because it is considered the number of house, that the household, the number of bedrooms they have, the number of beds. They want to maintain their own lease. I ask them, "Why don't you get a second job?" And they look at me and smile and say, "But that's just a cycle. If I get another job, then I have to have daycare and all I'm doing is handing my money from my second job over to the daycare, and that's gonna be used against me that I never see my children." It's a cycle, and it's a cycle they can't get out of. They don't have backup like I do. They don't have a father that will loan them money. They don't have credit because they are either young and have an established credit, or they've learned that going through a divorce is devastating on their credit and no one's gonna give them a loan, especially when they're already behind on their car note and there's a possibility they don't even have a job. My concern is that people are misunderstanding. This is not about putting these folks out of business. It's about regulation. Banks are regulated when they give loans. I'm not sure why there's a loophole for this particular industry, but it seems like it's trapping minorities, whether it's by race or by gender or by sexual preference or by socioeconomic circumstances. But Mark Twain said that whenever you find yourself on the side of majority, that's the time, time to take pause and reflect. We must reflect. Anyone who would think this can't happen to them, well, then they're very fortunate because I don't believe this could never happen to me. I'm well-educated, but who knows? I can't tell you the number of oil-filled men that come into my office every day. They're terrified. They're terrified because they've been working hard. They've been doing what they need to do. And now they're about to lose their job, their car notes, their houses. Their spouses no longer want them because the income's no longer coming in. They're gonna fight for their families. They're gonna do whatever they can to get a loan. But if they're already in arrears, they're upside down. They come into me, they don't tell me this, but they've taken what income they have, what savings, and they pay for an attorney because they're not gonna go before the court without an attorney when their spouse shows up with one. So they're left scrambling to pay that car note, pay that lease, buy some groceries, keep the light built on. It is that simple. These are not folks that aren't responsible or hardworking. These are people just like you and I. And they're secretive and they're hiding it. My clients that I talked to about this had to explain to me how this works, and they didn't want to appear here today because they were embarrassed. They're embarrassed that they have no other options. So I'm here to speak for them today and to ask you to consider voting in favor of this. I think Councilwoman Ishihara, Casha, Snotty, and hopefully Mr. Moore are gonna vote in favor of this. I hope that David Wright and Sidney also consider this. I can't imagine not voting for this because other cities have this ordinance. This is not new. This is becoming the norm in the state of Texas. And for us not to support it reflects poorly upon our own community. How can we say no to those who need us the most? Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Pruitt?
How are y'all? All right, don't answer that. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak. First thing I want to say is, is it's, it's not becoming the norm. Two and a half percent of the cities in the state of Texas have done this. So this is not the norm. And secondly, this is, which I know all of y'all, well, most of y'all, all the council received this. This is all of the customer, it's, it's a thousand customers, around a thousand customers along view that were not afraid to speak out against this. And I don't know if y'all read it, but hopefully you did. So I'm just gonna- Thank y'all for allowing me to be here. My name's Jay Pruitt. I'm payday loan business owner, small business owner. I've got a couple of locations here in, here in Longview. And believe me, I understand that y'all are looking at this ordinance objectively, you know, as good people. Nobody, you know, nobody accuses anybody of being, you know, passing anything bad or doing anything like that, but y'all are not the users of this product. And I'm not being, trying to be ugly or anything, but there are people, there are, there's probably 10,000 people in this city that actually use this product. It's not, they're not voters. They're not people that come to city council meetings. They're people that work for a living. They're people that go, you know, take their kids to school, go to work, come home, cook dinner, and sit on the couch. They don't, they're not worried about politics. Not worried about things like that. So you're not gonna hear out from them very much, and I'm grateful this, we had this turnout. These people don't have savings accounts. I, I don't want to run into all y'all. Y'all, y'all know all that. But stop for a second. Imagine if you were in their shoes. Somebody who, who, sorry. Had to, had to figure out a way to get money. Just had to figure it out, like, like, I don't, I don't have anybody to turn to, right? My- I don't have anybody to turn to. So, you know, imagine, imagine your kids needed shoes for school tomorrow, so, so they didn't, they weren't the only kids at school without new shoes or- and I get it, y'all don't, y'all aren't saying that you're trying to shut the industry down. The small lenders are, are leaving when this happens. I will tell you that. I've spent the last month researching this thoroughly, and I've spoke with many of y'all. And in the beginning, I didn't believe it, but, but the, the big guys are the ones that have deep, deep pockets. They're gonna be here. They can, they can survive this. I can't. And that's why I'm so emotional right now. But just imagine, imagine if you were in that position where you actually had to go borrow money from somebody. It's hard for people of the government, you know, to, to actually reflect on people that, you know, use this service. That, that's, that's around 1,000 surveys, which are the voices of Longview. I believe it's, I believe it's, it's the council's responsibility. If, if y'all are gonna pass a law, which, which I don't think has ever been done as far as a law, if y'all are gonna pass a law, I think, I think it would be very responsible for y'all to actually pay attention to- attention to the people, the people that use this service. And I'm not saying the people of Longview, because, believe me, it would be easier to go out and find, for me to find 1,000 people to vote against this than it would be to find people that use this service. That ain't hard. But when you go to the people that use this service, they need it. They don't have access to credit like we do. Excuse me, like some people do. 'Cause I can't go get a bank, a loan from the bank either. You've gotta have a 650 credit score to go get a loan from the bank. And, you know, the average middle-class person can't do it. You can't do it. And, and this ordinance, what it's gonna do, it's gonna restrict access to people's credit. Is that what, is that what government is built to do? Are we gonna start restricting people from things? I, I think it's, you know, somebody was talking about the Constitution earlier, y'all know what I think already, I'm not gonna say it. But, but if you, if you read through that, people don't want, they don't, they don't want the government going through, you know, their, their bank stuff, and, you know, being involved in their stuff. They don't want you to limit access to their credit, for sure. They don't want you to tell them how fast they have to pay it back. If you, if anybody read anything that, that was delivered, you see that, that the majority of our people are responsible people. We're not talking about people that can't add. I mean, we, we make sure that they have their X, Y, and Z, and, you know, and make sure that, that it's gonna be a good, healthy relationship. Last thing I wanna say is, I, I, have y'all ever heard, "You can keep your doctor"? Anybody heard that statement? If you like your doctor, you can keep your doctor? Right? This, that's exactly what I see in this. And I think that whenever, whenever Obamacare was introduced, right, I, I don't think there was a, well, obviously you're gonna have politics in play, but the true person didn't have a problem with it. Because the way it was introduced was it's gonna help people, this is gonna do good. This is gonna get people that can't get insurance, you know, able to get insurance, right? And it didn't happen. We all know where we, how we all feel about Obamacare now. We're all mad about it, because that didn't happen, right? And I'm not gonna get into that. But, but when I see this ordinance, that's what I see. I see a...
Mr. Pruitt, much like getting into that story, your time is up.
I think I got your point.
Brenda Day Beavis?
Good evening, Mayor Mack, Counsel, Mr. Willard. Thank you for letting me be here. As Executive Director of Doors Youth Transition Center, one of my jobs, and I counted a privilege, by the way, is to advocate for at-risk and homeless young people up to age 25 that are in poverty. I'm here to advocate for those who cannot advocate for themselves. I emailed each one of you earlier this week, but I want you to look at that document. I shared about one of our participants, she's a single mom, she's in college, she's working two part-time jobs. A week ago Monday, on February the 15th, you will see on that document, without talking to me first, she went to a payday lender to borrow $350. You will see that her due date for repayment is next week, on March the 1st. You will see that her interest rate is 618.27%. So in two weeks, she's supposed to pay back $438. Not gonna happen. I think we can imagine what will happen beyond that. Just before I left the office to come to the city council meeting, one of our young ladies that was the fourth person to successfully complete our transitional housing program, she just dropped by the office just to check in, that's what they do from time to time. By the way, I do wanna interject. The very first young lady that spoke tonight from Newgate Mission in the Citizens Comment section, April Burton, she was the very first homeless young lady placed in our transitional housing program to move out. She purchased her own home, by the way, back in, on the south side, back in November, and now she is serving as a board member at Newgate, so I'm really tickled about that. But anyway, this young lady dropped by the office a while ago, and I happened to ask her, "Have you, do you have any experience with a payday lender loan?" And she, I mean, you should've seen her facial expression, and yes, she did. And I said, "Can I write some notes?", 'cause she doesn't know anything about the ordinance. Here's what she told me. This was before she became a participant at Doors. She borrowed $200. Her repayment exceeded $500 by the time all was said and done. She said, "I was overwhelmed, I was very intimidated." She said, so the decision that she made was, she chose to have her utilities cut off, rather than go through that experience again. She said it was very frightening. And then she said to me, and I'm quoting, "The money was very easy to get, but the experience was very hard to get past." I'm just gonna ask you to, to look at the multiple benefits of this ordinance, because there are multiple benefits. Look at those benefits through the eyes of someone in poverty. May be difficult for you to do. Please care enough about those that are struggling to face life in poverty, to grasp that they need you to help them with some measure of protection by voting in favor of this ordinance. I do appreciate what each one of you do for our city. I thank you for the opportunity to share. I wanna put my head on my pillow tonight, and know that I did the most and the best that I could do on behalf of these young people, and I hope that you can do the same. Thank you.
Mayor Andy Mack, to my counsel, Woman District 3, Kasha Williams, the other council members, City Manager, ladies and gentlemen. How amazing it is that history repeats itself. For approximately 50 to 60 years ago, on some portions of these grounds on which we are standing and sitting tonight, as a young boy who father worked on these premises then called the box factory. How eyewitness predatory lenders waited outside the gates of the box factory on payday, took advantage of economically disadvantaged people who had worked hard all week long to pay for their loans, and would have to take out another loan just to try to make it through the coming week. And here we are tonight, 50 or more years later, trying to discuss, trying to discuss payday lending. The more things change, the more they remain the same. These types of payday lending law impose unfairly abusive terms on the borrowers, convincing them through deceptive coercive practice, trying to get them to borrow more. In Longview alone, in 2014, the estimated total income of new loans was $12,883,727. The estimated fee charges in Longview, $11,795,704. In Longview, some 339 vehicles were repossessed. My brothers and my sisters, the Texas Baptist Christian Life Commission expressed concern on the lack of meaningful reform on payday loan and auto title lenders industry in this past 84 session of the Texas Legislature. Will we too pass up a golden opportunity? Tonight, our eyes are upon those of you that can make the right decision to pass a local ordinance, regulating payday and auto title lenders. Don't allow another 50 years to go by without trying to make a difference for folk like me who cannot help themselves.
Ms. Joyce-Lynn Futterdichimi?
Good enough.
Good evening. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Ishihara, Williams, Snotty, and the rest of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, this is my very first time, I've lived in Longview for over 30 years. This is my very first time coming to the council, because the issue at hand is very crucial. I want to thank everybody that's here tonight, and I want to start by saying, we're not here saying to shut down the payday lenders. There is a population in our community that use their services. But what we're saying is to limit the percent and how actually they charge people. I brought you some numbers, because I like to deal with numbers. The annual percent rate for an auto title loan is 250%. A payday loan is between 500 to 600%. In 2014 alone, an estimated 339 hard-working families in our city lost a car to a title lender. That is seven families per week that lost their car. Think about it. This actually threatens the health and wealth being of our community. In Longview alone, $11.8 million was collected in fees by payday and auto title businesses in 2014 alone. You know, you think, "Who makes that kind of money? That kind of profit?" $11.8 million in 2014. That's what they collected. Longview has seen huge growth in payday and auto title storefronts in the past decade. In 2004, in our city, we had only seven storefronts. Today, we have 25 payday and auto title storefronts in Longview, a more than 300% increase during a time when our city population has only increased by 12%. Gentlemen, think about these numbers. One of the reasons for the huge growth in these businesses is that they have found a way to avoid state rate and fee caps, creating unfair playing field. Other loan businesses, like state banks and credit unions, and even pawn shops and finance companies, must follow state rate and fee caps for consumer lending and many serve subprime customers. Ladies and gentlemen, you're sitting here, you're gonna go to church, you need to deal with your conscience. That's one thing, this is an opportunity for you to say no, and help those people who cannot help themselves. I'm not here to preach to you, but let me tell you, God is watching. Yes, he is watching, you can laugh, God is watching this decision tonight. Just want to remind you of that. I close, that time has come for Longview to join our partner cities across the state, from Midland and Amarillo, to Temple and Bryan and College Station. Thank you very much.
My name is Greg Moulton, I work as a superintendent for a major manufacturer in Longview. I'm also a licensed ordained minister of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. Six years ago, I was at the BGCT, we've heard that name thrown out a number of times tonight, the Baptist General Convention of Texas in McAllen, Texas, and I think that was the first time a resolution addressing title loans was brought up. And at that convention, I remember, they threw out lots of numbers like I've heard tonight. Numbers that I turned out I know are unsubstantiated, unsupported, and many times untrue. And that time, I threw my hand up in support of it. Six years later, five and a half years later, I find myself on the other end of that debate. I've heard story after story of mothers coming in who can't afford food, clothing, diapers for their children. People who had electricity shut off, or water shut off, would come and get loans. I have guys who have worked for me, who work for me now, who have title loans, if they didn't, they wouldn't have jobs, 'cause they wouldn't have tires on their cars to come to work. That's just a fact. This is, I'd say, a service that is needed. I thank God, I am a blessed man. I do not live payday to payday. I suspect no one on this council works payday to payday, or lives that way. As an emergency in my house, between insurance and money I have saved, I can afford medical care instantaneously. Two years ago, my daughter needed four wisdom teeth pulled, and between insurance and everything else, I had to come up with $500. That wasn't a problem for me, and Dr. Macrofe Teeth look great today, thank you very much.
Father's gonna take it on that one.
Yeah, you do. Terrific job. But I was lucky, or blessed is a better word. Many people can't do that. I've had an employee, a recent employee, whose wife needed emergency medical care for abscesses in her teeth that gumsetic, and she was hurting. He had to come up with a large amount of money, title loan came through for him. It was just that, it was, I mean, it was a payday loan, it came through with him, and the following payday, he did exactly what he was supposed to do. He paid off that loan. Nobody twisted his arm to come in there, he did it. He knew when he went in there, what was explained to him. And he did exactly what it was supposed to be. I've heard numbers, what baffles me is, nobody on the pro side of this can keep, give the same number. I hear 400, 600, just throw out 12,000, it really doesn't matter. The purpose of these loans are short-term loans, for people who cannot get loans. So they're, for amortize that over a year, it's not fair, 'cause that's not the intent of the loan itself. The intent of the loan is getting through a short period of time, and that's how it should be used. I speak partly because my daughter's part of this business, and I know when people come in to that store, they're explaining to them very clearly what their terms are. There's no, there's no hidden lining, there's no, nothing you can't read, and so they know what they're getting into. The guys I've worked for who come to me and talk about it, they know what they're getting into, and they have to use them. I do, I do take exception to some of the things I've heard tonight. I'm glad I'm at the end and not towards the beginning. I like to address the ladies who spoke at House of Hope, I'm appreciative of the ministry they have. The Newgate Mission, I'm appreciative of the ministry they have. Highway 80 Rescue Mission, I'm appreciative of the ministry they have. But let's be very clear, homelessness is not created by title and payday loans. Homelessness, homelessness starts with no education, and is then followed up with drug addiction, alcohol, domestic violence. These are the things that drive people to homelessness, not payday loans. I've heard other terms, I heard some and say, "It's legalized loan shark." Well, I've never dealt with a loan shark, and I've only seen the movies, but best my knowledge, if you don't pay a loan shark, he breaks your legs, he burns your house, he hurts your family. Nobody I know in this industry does that, so I find that insulting. We've heard in the newspapers and people on this council, it's called predatory across the state. Predators are those who are on the internet who are after my children. Those are predators. I find that insulting. I heard a man up here, and I appreciate his passion. He wanted to compare it to selling heroin and cocaine. That's just ridiculous, ludicrous, that's a good word we've heard all night, that's ludicrous. This is not right. The man who spoke, associated with NAACP, he said the right thing. It's about education, it's about educating people to get out of a poverty cycle, but a poverty cycle that is not created by this industry. If you want, I guarantee you, those who come from payday loans, title loans, who need the money, they're going to get their money. That's the way it is. To say there's no regulation, there are regulations. To say they're skirting the law, it's untrue. And anybody in this room, and I see the police here, if people are breaking the law, they ought to be arrested. And so to say they're breaking the law is an untruth, and it's wrong, that's not happening. To say they're skirting the law, then we ought to bring legislation, we ought to bring, we ought to have civil suits. Why aren't we doing this? Because it's not true. This, this is a service. I've seen it firsthand. I can go to a bank, and I can get a loan. I can go to a bank, and I can buy a car. If my car breaks tomorrow... If my car breaks tomorrow, I can find one, and my daughter will give me a ride, and we'll find some way to do it. I don't have to go get it. Thank you very much.
Greg Molton, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Mia Levitin, and I'm the pastor of St. Andrew Presbyterian Church, and I am here tonight to also represent Reverend Nick Setzer and Reverend Kendall Land, who were not able to attend. And we are in support of the ordinance to restrict payday lending. I believe that Christ taught us to care for the least of these. I believe that payday lenders do not care for the least of these, but seek out the vulnerable members of our community and the folks on the margins in our communities. I invite you to follow in Christ's teachings with me and support this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. Jasmine Richardson.
I'm Jasmine Richardson, and I'm against the ordinance. I don't know if I have a good understanding of the ordinance, but my thing is, you guys are saying that these people are not able to pay their fees. I wish you guys could answer me, but my thing is, y'all, you want them to pay their fees plus twenty-five percent of the loan? If that's, maybe I have that wrong, but if they can't pay that, well, we're charging them already. What makes you think they can pay what y'all trying to make them pay? It's not gonna work. Our thing is, if y'all make them, they're not gonna come in there. We've got these people to sign these things. They're against it. They don't, they already told us, oh, we can't do that. That's gonna affect me. I won't have a job. I have three kids. I don't have, what am I gonna do? What am I gonna do? Like, I don't know. That's all I have to say.
And thank you. Kendall Land. I think she said he wasn't able to be here. He wasn't able to be here, is that correct? She was speaking for him earlier? Thank you. John T. Smith.
Mayor, Councilman. Personal financial responsibility by the citizens and awareness are certainly what I think is probably gonna be the most helpful resolution. On a note, as an educator, I can tell you that financial literacy has become at the forefront of education. The National Council for Economics and Education has been a big proponent of students from fourth grade, beginning in fourth grade, all the way through the tenth grade, to include financial literacy as a part of the Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills, or what we now call STAR. So the good news is that alternative financial institutions are now being discussed in the public schools as a matter of knowledge and skills necessary to make informed decisions. I think it's interesting that the statement was made within the last five minutes that payday loans are not the originator of people who are in poverty. The thought occurred to me that that probably is true, but it could also be argued that payday loans are certainly sustaining poverty. And so financial assistance to citizens in need may come through family members, the church, strangers even, and not-for-profit agencies, or alternative financial institutions when less creditworthy banks or credit unions cannot extend credit. I support the ordinance. I would ask that the council go one step further. Further, farther. Further. And take additional steps as you consider voting for the ordinance. Take additional steps to seek out local not-for-profit organizations and agencies that are willing to consider bill-pay assistance relief of basic utilities such as electric, water, and gas to qualified applicants in the city of Longview who need that assistance in an effort to, one, perhaps maybe reduce the amount of money that is being borrowed at these payday institutions, or eliminate them altogether. This has worked in other cities. I relocated from the Dallas-Fort Worth area approximately four years ago. The city of Irving is a municipality that is also working with not-for-profit agencies that are providing assistance to their citizens and have been doing it for a good fifteen to sixteen years. One such not-for-profit agency in the city is, that the city supports and helps, is called Irving Cares. And Irving Cares provides emergency assistance for electric, water, gas, and in some cases, rent to people who have come upon some sort of short-term hardship. And so while the ordinance is acceptable, it's not enough to consider limiting the amount of fees or exorbitant fees that are being assessed by these payday institutions. It's also incumbent upon you to do everything that you can to make citizens aware of their resources, some of which I named. Like I said, the church, the body of Christ is here to support those individuals that are in need, and that does not just extend to Christians. That extends to non-Christians as well. I've struggled with one last thing with the little time that I have left, and that is to offer a bit of transparency of my own situation. Four years ago, when I relocated from the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex as a public school teacher, I took a precipitous drop in my household income. From the city of Dallas proper to Longview, I took a seventeen thousand dollar per year income drop. There have been some adjustments on account of that. Within the last year, going from one school district to another, I took an additional four thousand dollars per year reduction in income. What's more, there have been some circumstances within the public school system that I left, some clerical errors that resulted in delayed pay in some cases, or missed pay. And that situation, for me personally, led to the need to borrow money from a payday lender. The amount, thirteen hundred dollars. The interest, had it been paid within the month or the date, would have been three hundred dollars. When I speak about personal financial responsibility, I'm sure that everyone in the payday lending company would applaud that, taking personal responsibility for the interest rate, for the fees, et cetera, for the decision and my choice to borrow from a alternative financial institution. But I need to paint a picture of what that looks like. As a public school teacher, I've worked about fifty-five hours per week on average. It took me approximately from September to January to work a part-time job over the weekends, incidentally, from ten PM to six AM as a hotel night audit clerk, to repay the thirteen hundred dollar payday loan. That meant time away from my daughters, that meant time away from my wife, that meant exhaustion. You might even say it meant some sort of sacrifice or compromise.
Mr. Smith, time's up. Thank you, sir. Samantha Carney.
My name is Samantha Carney. I've actually been in this industry for a little over thirteen years. And in that thirteen years, I have had many customers tell me that I've helped them in many ways, not only because they couldn't pay for their children's medication, they couldn't pay for their own heart medication because they just didn't have the funds. I look at this industry as a help, not a hinder. Not a hinder, and I really, really would love for you guys to vote against this ordinance.
Trinika Wetherid.
Hello, I was gonna say, my name is Trinika. I have to excuse my voice. I am worse. I've been working with payday loan company, Thrifty Loans now, for like eight years. As Samantha just said, payday loans, they are a help, not a hinder. We have people that come in that, some just, they just want extra money. So you know, they have a choice of coming in to get a loan. We not going to their homes and twisting their arms and got a gun to their head and making them come out and get this loan. They have a choice, and that's what they choose to do. And it's explained that, you know, when they come in, yeah, the interest rate is high, but it is explained. Most people that come in, and they have whatever issues they have going on, they only thinking about that issue that they have going on. They're worried about paying for how they're gonna pay for this later. But as they come in, they're only thinking about the issue that's going on. So me personally, myself, I am against the ordinance, and I hope that you guys will vote against the ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Shaquela Claiborne.
Good evening. My name is Shaquela Claiborne, and I'm against the ordinance of the payday loans, and please let my choice be heard.
Thank you, ma'am. Marbella Espinoza.
Hello. My name is Marbella Espinoza, and I am against the ordinance. Now, I worked for Thrifty Loans, and I've had a loan before. And it touches me because I had a loan because I needed it, and I was, I knew what I had to pay back. And it's crazy to think that they come and say that you're gonna be homeless because you have a bill. Sometimes you have to do that. I don't have credit. I can't go to the bank and get a loan for five hundred dollars. And now, it's affecting people like me that get a loan and that pay their loan. I can pay my regular payment. If you raise my payment up, what am I gonna do? Am I gonna stop paying a bill so I can pay more? Me personally, when I get a loan, I know when I'm gonna pay it back. Maybe sometimes it takes me a while, and I wait for my tax refund to get back, and I pay my loan off. Maybe I need to buy my kids toys for Christmas, so I get a loan for that. And it's not making me homeless, and it upsets me that people come and they've never had a loan. They just come and say, oh, so-and-so told me this. No, when you get a loan, then you know how helpful a loan is for you when you really need it and you don't have the credit. And I'm against it.
Thank you. Kristi Hawkins.
Hello. I am Kristi Hawkins. I have been a customer and an employee of the payday loan system. Payday loans are very beneficial to our community. I don't look at myself or my employees as predators. I look at us as helpers and somewhat of providers to the person that does not need it. We help single parents, we help social security customers, and we regulate our loans. We don't lend over what they can afford. We do have regulations and rules. Also, I want to highlight that we even help our consumers when they lose their jobs, when they're unemployed. We have certain laws that we provide for them where we may lower some interest to help them out, to get out of this situation. So I just wanna say that all of us are not predators. We are actually here to help the community, and I just wanna let you all know that, and I am against the ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. Lavanna Lash.
Hi, my name is Lavanna Lash. I have been a customer of payday loan company. I currently work for Thrifty Loans. Previously, I worked for a smaller financial institution, which we were credit-based. There were many occasions to where I would have to turn away a customer because of their credit. And I know many people can sit, and they can look, and they can judge a payday loan company, but until, like many people have said, you've been in someone's shoes where it may be a light bill that's gonna be cut off, or you don't have food to feed your children, then you can't really judge. You can't see what's gonna happen to those people. And I know personally that my boss, Lenora Rose, she will take a dollar for a payment, get that customer on a low payment plan, and stop the interest. We literally stop it and let them pay that loan out to where they're not steadily in that cycle over and over again. So it's not for every customer who's gonna come in and they're just stuck in a cycle. When they tell us something's happened, we take that opportunity and we listen. So again, I mean, as you clearly see, I am against the ordinance.
Thank you. Lenora Rose.
Mayor Mack, council members, thank you for this opportunity. Can you guys hear me? I noticed some of the people who spoke are not here today, who spoke have left. I also noticed a lot of them came up here with papers that they read from. Every article that they read, I have read. So it let me know, they just, either someone told them to do some research, or someone printed something for them to come here to present. I do respect the attorney who did say that she never had to have a loan before. I do respect the lady who spoke about and gave you all, I think, a copy of a contract. And Ed, you've been a financial advisor, you can explain to them how that percentage worked, because if you come back in fourteen days, it's not four hundred percent. That's over a twelve-month period. Some people that made some statements today, Mayor Mack, I don't want to put names on them, but they weren't correcting what they were saying. The reason I am so passionate about what I do, because I like to help people, is not to get people into a cycle. I want to stand here today and turn around to everyone, and anyone who hear me in the audience out there where they can't see, I want to apologize to them if they got caught up in a loan that they could not pay. I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you that there's some people who do get caught up in these loans. It happens. It really do happens. We make sure we tell them, it's for a short-term period. We don't want you, I don't care if you don't pay for five dollars, ten dollars, pay it down. The problem I have with this ordinance, as I said the first time I spoke, I ask or request that you all just wait. I wish we could have gotten task force with someone like me with twenty years of experience, someone who have had bad experience, some people, and we could have got together and say, let's do this here. Maybe you need to lower your fees. But to tell or to request a customer to pay twenty-five percent of the principal plus their interest, now, what you all, and the articles I have read, and I sat down with a customer, and I reviewed the ordinance with them, they have been told, this is gonna help me. It is. You tell me I could make four payments on my car, and I'd be through, I'm gonna be happy. I'm gonna jump on that. But what you didn't tell me is what my four payments was gonna be. You didn't tell me that. That third payment may be the rent. That third payment may be my childcare. So what I'm asking the city council members to go back and review, I don't know if I can use the word table. can use the word table, if I got the authority to say that, let's look at this again. Let's review what has been presented. And I appreciate you for caring for the community and I'll be at your walk on Saturday. I appreciate to know that the city council people care about the community. Thank you. I appreciate that. I really appreciate that. So just, let's look at this again. And you guys may have made your decision already and if so, I respect that. But we came out here, as you can see, a lot of us came out just for you to hear us, to hear our voice and not to tell me how to spend my money. Don't take away my choice. Give me some options. Let's talk about it. That's all we want to say to you all today. That's all we can say to you all today, is to listen to us, look at the surveys. And if you're gonna have someone here to speak, let it be people who have went through this year, not no one who's never needed $300. I do believe we should educate people. I've been trying to get my mother to save money for years. She's 68-years-old. If you all think you can rescue people, I wish you luck. Because what you're gonna make them do is, they're gonna leave me, they're gonna go here and they're gonna go here and you have not solved the problem. And 50% of the payday loans here, and if that's your intention was to close them, you've done a great job. You did it. But what you're now gonna realize is, that $500 loan that you mentioned was $118, is now $250. Cause it ain't but a couple of them here now, they can charge what they want. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. And that concludes our speaker cards.
Hi, my name's Rod Scott, I'm a local attorney here in town. Cash and I are good friends and Kristen and I are good friends, I don't think I've met the rest of you. I'm a consumer bankruptcy lawyer and I've been seeing this situation for about the last 10 years. Late this afternoon, my legal assistant emailed y'all all an article or a little letter that I'd written, I think it's probably too long to put into the newspaper, but if you don't get it, let me know or have Kristen and I'll get it to you. I'm not really sure how to approach this because I have people, I've heard people saying things like, "Bring somebody in who's suffered that experience." And I really haven't had to go to a payday lender, but I see my clients all the time. And frankly, I don't think the folks that work at these places are predators or anything like that. Frankly, I think the owners are. I don't know what the solution is. I think the lady made a good point when she said, "The bigger problem is not 20% cap, it's the people come to me that have five or six of these things and their entire check is gone." I don't know how you solve that problem. But you know, I just wanted to say that I think that some sort of regulation would be good and if y'all wanna talk about it some more, I'd be happy to visit with any of y'all about what I see. I see it as a real problem. I sometimes wonder why 100% interest wouldn't make them a profit. It's to me, when I see, when I see these things come in at 600 and 700%, and when you get my letter, there was one gentleman brought, came to me, his interest rate was 1350%. And for what, you know, for what it's worth, when I first moved here, we had these B loan companies that were making good profits at, you know, 70% interest, something like that. These things just came up out of nowhere and when they talk about regulation, in my letter to y'all, I mentioned a YouTube video where, let me think, what's his name? John Oliver did an article on this about a year ago. And he not only did it about payday loans across the country, but in Texas specifically, and he had a little video clip where someone down in Austin was talking about why we didn't need to regulate this industry. And one of the other people pointed out, he owned 12 of them. So we've got the fox, you know, the fox guarding the hen house down there. I'm not sure that the city can do that, can do anything about that, but I think it's worth taking a look at.
Thank you sir. Okay.
Can anybody speak to this, put out a card yet?
Yes sir, you may.
I'm no younger than I used to, so I can't walk as fast as I used to. My name is Caleb Ray Coats and I'm a minister here in town and starting back in 2001, I started facilitating a course, many have probably heard of Dave Ramsey's Financial Peace University. And I did probably 12 or 15 of those and then I had some pastors in the community say, "Look, my folks, first of all, they're not gonna come for 13 straight weeks and they're not gonna pay $100 for a kit. Would you develop something that you will teach? You charge what you wanna charge and make it shorter." So I put something together for that purpose and started teaching that, it takes eight weeks and I don't charge anything. And that's been going on for several years now and I enjoy it very much. It's teaching people how to get out of debt instead of debt. What I did not enjoy is when I started opening the door for people who had completed the class successfully and wanted help, personal help, one-on-one. Cause in the class, you're not talking about that person's specific finances. But you come to my house and meet with my wife and I, now we're talking about your income, your bills, and what can you do going forward to try to get above all this? It takes some time for them to do that, but that's when I started hearing about the payday lending. And the worst one I had was a lady who had 11 payday loans going on at the same time, 11 of them. She didn't know what to do. So I started talking to her about this and, "Why did you let this happen? And what are you doing with this money?" So she started telling me this story about why she was borrowing the money. And in her case, this were, she had 30 and 40-year-old children who were saying, "Well, I need a large screen TV," or "I need a this, or I need a that." And she was going out and borrowing to buy her kids' stuff that they ought to be buying themselves. So as we talked through this process, I finally ascertained that this lady was not gonna stop doing this. And so I told her, "I'm sorry, I can't help you. If you decide that you're gonna stop this cycle, then I will help you and tell you what to do to get out of debt. But you're not gonna do what I tell you to do because even if you do, you're gonna go right back and do it again." And her testimony was her own husband had the ability to pay these loans off and wouldn't do it. Because he knew that she would keep on doing it. So my concern has been that there's, they're being allowed to take multiple loans out from different companies, I'm sure it wasn't the same, well, I know it wasn't the same company, she gave me her list. So it's being allowed to do that and so they're not really realistically being limited to, let's say, a quarter of their income. That's what I was kinda hearing, $1,000 will let you have $250. Actually, they can go around other places and nobody seems to be checking whether you already have a bunch of these loans out. So that's a problem. That's great, but this lady obviously did not because people were still giving her loans right here in Longview. So yeah, and that's, I said, that's my worst one. So my concern has been that, and the other part of it is, when people are throwing out percentages, and I've heard these same percentages, 400, 500, 600, 800, it's an average here, it's an average in Texas, it's an average of the nation, and I'm a data person, I'm a numbers person, so I'm listening to the, how's it being categorized? And so yeah, it sounds like there's conflicting information, but sometimes it's not really conflicting at all. Then I hear words like, "Well, that's ludicrous. That's predatory." When you're having, trying to have a realistic conversation with someone and you are on opposite sides, like me and my wife, as soon as I say to her, "You're being ludicrous, what have I just done? I've just shut down the conversation, I don't wanna hear what you got to say, you're being ludicrous." And when she looks at me and says, "Well, that's not so bad, you're predatory." What is she just trying to do? Shut down the conversation. She can't have a really good argument and so she starts using those words. And we all do this. And I don't appreciate that, I don't think it's necessary to win your argument to call people names. What I do have a problem with, I think it's great that there's a service for people who need help and they can't find any place to go. I know there's places in town where you can get the help you need without having to borrow money. There's ministries that do the very things that some of these folks are talking about. But when you charge a large percent, that's where I have a problem with it. I don't understand how that is allowed to happen and apparently it's law or there's no law regulating it. But for someone, if they're paying 100% and the norm in society is below 10%, something's wrong. And so I don't care whether the person goes 100 times to get a loan, there ought to be some limit on how much profit I can make. There's biblical standards for it, there's societal standards for it, and I think we can come to a place, right here in Longview, Texas, where we can help with that. We wanna keep a service and I think you are providing a service. But how much is enough? We say to the millionaire, "How much is enough?" Well, when I get to be a billionaire, when he gets to be a billionaire, he's still pushing, still pushing, still pushing. How much is enough? And that's the question I was asked, if you were sitting with me one-on-one at Cotton Patch having lunch, how much is enough? You've got to make a profit, I understand that you got salaries to pay, rent to pay, I understand that, but how much is enough? So I encourage, really, there was, one of the ladies a while ago said, "Why don't we table it maybe?"
Sir, thank you very much. Okay, that's gonna do it, I think. Okay, council, discussion. Is there no discussion?
Yes.
Okay, where do you wanna start? Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Okay. I really need a legal opinion on this and I'd like for Ms. Isher to answer, if you would please. All right, you get an individual that has multiple loans, or let's say they have a balance of $1,000 that they owe one or two or several different companies and they come to you and as a legal counsel, they ask you, they say, "Ms. Isher, I can't pay them, what can they do to me individually because I owe them this money?" And that's my question, would you please tell me what they can do to me as an individual since I owe this money?
What they can do to you as an individual, if you have signed a contract like the one that Brenda presented to us, they can sue you for defaulting on a contract.
That's correct. All right, they sue me and that will cost them approximately how much money?
Oh gosh, I'm not sure, I mean, a filing fee like here in Gregg County would be at least $350 plus the attorney's fees, etc.
It's gonna cost them $350. It's gonna cost them, as Ms. Isher said, it's gonna cost them a filing fee of 300 to sue me and if I only owe them 250, and I've done this at four or five different places, they're gonna have to spend 350. And when they spend this 350, they'll get a judgment against me, all right? I live in a red house, my car is on a title loan, I make payments on my car, I make payments on my red house, now what are they gonna do with this judgment?
It sounds like it's probably uncollectible because you are judgment-proof.
That's right, it is uncollectible. So these people that are loaning this money know that in a forced situation, they have no recourse other than a judgment. Now this judgment will last for a long period of time and later on, if this person tries to buy a house or something, this judgment could be enacted. But if this is just a person that is rented, as these people have talked about tonight, they have an unenforceable judgment. So that, now that means probably that the person will not be able to borrow anymore, but if they're, if they're down $1,000 and they've taken care of their automobile repairs and they've taken care of their children's responsibilities and they've taken care of their grandmother that they owe money to, that they borrowed money to buy this car, well then, they're gonna have to quit borrowing. And that might be a good point right there. Now, so we found out about that. You know, I think this whole discussion tonight has been about, we're disregarding their ability to make their own decisions. And we talk about percentage, they're not worrying about a percentage, they're worrying about what can they pay back? If they feel that they can pay it back, it's not a percentage to them. The contract, as we were showing here, shows a dollar amount that they're gonna have to pay back. They're not worried about a percentage. If they knew how to figure percentages, they wouldn't be, they'd be working for the bank loaning $50,000 or $100,000. I just, I had a little bit of a problem. I really, now there may have been some, but there were very, very few that have taken out payday loans that came up and spoke against, no, excuse me, that spoke in favor of Ms. Isher's proposal. In other words, and Mr. Pruitt showed us, and I'm sure he went to quite a bit of expense, this stack over there, and I read, I didn't read all of them, I apologize, I didn't have time to read all of them. But most of those people that filled out those forms were intelligent, they had good handwriting and you could, you could read their forms. So I failed to see why they cannot be responsible for their own decisions. One lady said, they're not, oh, I gotta go to, oh, excuse me. Oh, wait a minute, I got, one lady finished up by saying, "We need to help those who cannot help themselves." Well, I'm gonna be a little political now, we can go all the way back to Lyndon Johnson that created this greater society, that put all these people on the welfare rolls and that told them it was okay not to, not to have an income. This is, and if we continue and we perpetuate that cycle, it's our own fault. We need to, we need to stop this government responsibility. These people need to understand at some point, they have to take, they're responsible for their own actions. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Mr. Wright?
I think the intent of this ordinance is probably good, but I don't think that it's doing what we want it to do. People can still borrow as much money as they want, they just have to go to four or five stores and then what happens? You have to pay it back, you have to pay it back in three or four payments instead of being able to spread it out over 10 payments or something like that. So I don't really see how that really helps anybody. We're talking about people who can't get a loan at a bank, can't get credit cards. We talk about how many people have lost things because of these payday loans and I'm sure there are some. But how many people have lost everything they've got to credit card companies? How many people have lost their house to some of these predatory mortgage companies back in the early 2000s? So I think there's people who really need this money and they're going to get the money. And I think if the people who want the ordinance and the people in the payday loan business would get together, I think there's very good people on both sides. If we get all those people together and come up with an ordinance that works for everybody, I think we can really help people. But I don't think this ordinance is going to be the one that helps these people.
Mr. Moore, I can see you're on edge.
Yeah. I spent a lot of time looking at a lot of statistics and went through a lot of those survey forms, visited with Jay, visited with David, visited with Lenora, and in the final analysis, I'm gonna support this ordinance just because we need to do everything we can to try to break any cycle of poverty that might exist in our community. Now, having said that, I read through the ordinance several times and there's one part of it that I'm not comfortable with. Up on the screen here, I've given an example of borrowing $400, having a $22.50 per 100 fee and repaying 25% principal each payment. That's what we call a very front-loaded amortization schedule. It gives the borrower absolutely no flexibility on repaying their loan. Most, well, not most, every one of those survey forms that I look through, that was their their number-one complaint about the ordinance. In visiting with the payday lending industry, if you will, that seemed to me to be the most onerous provision in the proposed ordinance. I have presented an amendment to council that's sitting in front of their places that eliminates that 25% requirement. Instead, it replaces that with a requirement that a portion of the principal be paid each and every payment, and we still limit it to three renewals. But it gives the borrower some flexibility on two weeks hence, they can pay 10%. The next two weeks, they can pay 40%. They've still got to get it paid off in three renewals or less, but they have some flexibility on how they do that. So for what that's worth, when we get to that point, Mayor, I am going to offer that as a motion.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Moore?
Sure.
Because I was confused when you brought that up. I read it and I saw it, and I'm just, I'm asking it simply a question. Because when you take out a specific number that's 25% and you replace it with a number that is not there, it says a portion, then that's leaving an ambiguous figure to every lending organization that they can do whatever they want. So if they say, "I want that portion to be 100% the first time," what are you going to do about it? Because you've left it open to a portion instead of a strict percentage, which makes it even more unenforceable, the way I look at that, because it's arbitrary now. You've gone from a number to being arbitrary, and a portion, as you stated, is arbitrary. So I'm concerned about that wording.
Okay.
So I just needed you to, and maybe explain that to me, or explain how that's going to help if you have, say, a lender that requires more than 25% payback at that first, second, or third payment.
Well, that's, you know, a business decision on their part. I prefer to use the word flexible, flexibility rather than arbitrary, but the important thing is to get from point A to point B in three renewals or less. If the business is going to require it without any renewal, that's their call. Probably not going to get a lot of takers on that, but that's their call. I'm just trying to give the borrower some room on how they repay it in, within the three renewals. I think that's the important part. Don't let it stretch out to five, six, eight, 10 renewals.
In this discussion, I've sat and listened, and it's been, this is a very emotional topic where there are multiple sides to all of these discussions. And I've heard some terms that disturb me. I've heard some terms that I think are unfair on both sides. The term predatory should never be used in this instance. I don't think that's just, I just think that's name-calling. It's not appropriate. You don't gain anything by that. I've also heard the word loopholes a lot. Loopholes, we look at that as it being illegal, but that's, a loophole is not illegal. A loophole is an allowable way of doing business in whatever you're talking about, whether it be payday lending or with the IRS or wherever. People refer to loopholes, but loopholes are not against the law. Loopholes are legal. So this is not an illegal activity going on in our community. What it is, it is a difficult situation where I do think that there needs to be, there needs to be regulation. There's no question about that. But I truly feel this should come from the state level where it can be actually enforced. Because I don't think we have the ability to enforce this regulation, this ordinance, if we put it in place. I don't think we have the manpower. We don't have auditors. We don't have staff. We don't have the money for that. And I'm not saying it's not a necessary thing, but I'm saying it's being handled, I think, at the wrong level. I think we should be, we should be, hold on, no applause, it's okay. I mean, I'm not here to gain or garnish support either way. I think we should be taking this up to our state legislatures, who are in an election right now. If you want to see real reform, it'll have to come from the state level, because we're not going to be able to reform this in Longview. We can pass an ordinance, but it'll be an ordinance with no teeth. It'll be an ordinance that we can't do anything about, and it's just another ordinance on the books that we all get tired of when we can't enforce these things. And it'll be complaint-driven, and I'm like Mr. Allen. The complaints will come from the people utilizing the service, but I haven't heard a lot of those people complaining tonight. I've heard people complaining that don't use the service, but you're not going to be able to make a complaint to the city that, on someone else's behalf, that's not going to get the ordinance resolved. And so it's going to be coming from people who are voluntarily utilizing this service, and I'm not here to judge needs or not needs. I'm assuming people who go here have to go here because it's the only place they can go. They must go to these organizations to get money because they need something. Now, from that point on, once again, I think we should have legislation that is meaningful and lasting, and I can't see it coming anywhere but from the state level. And what concerns me the most of all is that, I don't consider this a religious issue. This isn't a moral issue. This is an issue of where government control starts and stops. And I'm not a big fan of government control telling me what to do in my business. And we just talked a minute ago in the food truck industry. We're not here to regulate competition. We just stated that. And we also stated, we're not here to manage finances. I've heard people in this council say this tonight, but yet, we're here trying to regulate competition and manage finances. And I don't think you can pick one industry and say we're going to, another industry and say we're not going to, because then we're not consistent. And if nothing else, we need to be consistent. And I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing anyone. I love all of you all. You know that, and I respect your opinions. But as a council, I want to maintain consistency in what we do because I think it's all we can really fall back on. You know, the newspaper, in one of the last editorials I read, they said, "Free enterprise, you know, council's responsibility." And believe it or not, I agree with that. I agree with this, council's responsibility to ensure free enterprise. We're not here to, it's just not our job, in my opinion, to be the regulators of, number one, business, and number two, people's finances. I think people have to take responsibility. You know, there's two schools of thought. You can either say, "Okay, I'm a school of thought where government should control everything. That's called socialism." Or you say, "Individuals have to take responsibility for themselves." And I think individuals must take responsibility. Government is here to protect public safety and health concerns. That's what we're here for. We have to make regulations. We have to legislate, and we do that. But I think we have to be very careful when we cross this line, because this is a slippery slope. Who's to say that we're not going to next attack the florist industry because they mark their prices up during Valentine's Day when you have to buy a dozen roses? They're jacking the prices up based on the time of the year. Or the hotel industry, or the clothing industry, or anything else. We're going to take government into a place where I don't think government belongs, and that's in private business. You know, what's interesting is, you know, I have, and bear with my story, I bear with y'all's all night. Yeah, I have three children, and none of them have jobs. None of them have any money really whatsoever. They're all in school. They can't afford anything unless I allow them to afford it. But you know what? I have a pretty good job and a decent income. If my kids and I apply for the same credit card, they can get a higher, they can get a higher rate than I can get. You know why that is? They can get a higher credit limit than I can, and I have a job and they have nothing. You know why that is? Because the credit cards don't want me to have the credit card, because I'm going to pay it off every month. That's my choice. My kids can't pay that off. It's up to me to pay it off. And so they, want them to have a higher credit limit so that they can spend more money. Well, you know what? I'm not going to regulate the credit card industry because that's just business practices. And if that's, if my kids decide to sign up for it and they can't pay for that, it'll fall back on me. But that's where we have to take personal responsibility for our own finances. And I just hate to see us embark in an area where I don't think government belongs. I'm going to say that again. You know, if you want to say, how, where do you stop? Where do you stop if you start? Because I say, "Don't start," but where do you stop? I'm going to just give you an example, and I hate to use this, but I'm going to use it. Let's just say you have a water bill, and your water bill is $30 a month to the city of Longview, and you don't pay your water bill. Your water gets cut off. When it gets cut off, if you want it turned back on, you're going to pay a $20, a $50 fee and a $25 fee if you want it done the same day. And then you pay 10% on your last month's sewer water bill. So let's just say $80. 50 plus 25, let's just say $5, $80. So you're paying $80 back on your $30 water bill. That's 267% interest, and our city of Longview is charging. I'm not saying that's wrong. I'm just saying that's what we do. And if you want your water turned back on, guess what? You're going to have to pay that. But those are conscious choices that we all have to make, and it's time for us to take responsibility for our own actions and responsibility for what we do in our lives. And I'm just saying, understand, I don't discount the fact that there needs to be regulation. You need to make that really, really clear. I just don't think we're the governing arm to do that regulation. And by the way, I heard the statistic, there are over 3,200 cities in the state of Texas, 3,200, there's 31 of them that do payday lending, this ordinance. 31 out of 3,200, that's less than 1% of the cities in Texas that are doing this. I'm not saying that as an applause. I'm saying, it's telling me that this is probably not the avenue to go because it's not catching on. Let's try something different. If we want to see some reform, let's take it where we can really see real reform. And I'm all for that. I am, I truly am. And I don't think anyone in this room would disagree with that, to have true reform, but make it on a level where we can actually, we can actually make it stick. That's my concern. Sorry it took so long.
I know Ms. Ishihara has things to say, and I'll give you the last word, so.
Do you want to make?
Anybody else want to say anything?
I know, I really actually only want to say one thing. I really do truly appreciate all of the council members' time. I know you all have each spent a lot of time researching this and talking to people about it, and I do really appreciate your time. We are all going to remain friends after tonight, so it's going to be okay. I, Ms. Lenar, and I have agreed to disagree, and we're still going to be friends tomorrow. I appreciate everybody that's come out to speak, both in support and opposed to it. It's a lot of time, and I understand that, and I really do appreciate all of the time you have invested in it. That is all that I would like to say. With that, I will make a motion to approve the ordinance with Ed's proposed amendment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance with the amendment Mr. Moore has brought before us. All in favor, signature by the same eye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Okay, show of hands, I think I saw it. Eyes, nose, for three motion carries. Items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
At the beginning of the school year, I was adopted by a fifth-grade class, Mrs. Cloud's fifth-grade class at the East Texas Christian School. Veterans Day, they all sent me homemade Veterans Day cards. I got a packet from them today, homemade Valentine's Day cards, each of which has some scripture in it, talking about God's love for all of us. And I hope, kids, that you are doing your homework instead of watching me tonight, but I want to thank you very much for adopting me and for sending me these cards. Very thoughtful.
Ms. Snoddy?
I have nothing.
Ms. Williams?
I have nothing.
Ms. Ishihara?
Do I have a picture? Maybe, for the walk? No? No? Oh, and I even asked for permission to put the picture of Andy and David wearing red heels up, and it's, okay, next time.
We asked for permission not to be shown.
I would again like to invite each of you to attend our Zonta Walk Against Violence. It's also the East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team's Walk a Mile in Red Shoes, which Honorable David and Honorable Mayor Mack participated in last year, wearing red high heels for an entire mile walk. We really appreciated them, and there is a picture to prove that, but apparently I did not get it submitted in time. So if you would join us, registration is at 8:00 on Saturday morning. The walk begins at 9:00. We would love to have you there. It's at the First Baptist Church downtown. That's all.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Allen?
Well, I'm looking at the clock up there, and it's a quarter of nine. Really, what I want to say is thank you for all of you that came out tonight and didn't get up and leave halfway through like most people do. I appreciate your attendance. We appreciate how involved you've been, and we appreciate the opportunity to listen to you and hear you tell us how you feel about these different items. Thank you.
Mr. Willard?
Okay, I have two things. First off, I would like to, I don't know, give a shout-out. I was at a fundraiser this weekend, by the way, it was a wonderful fundraiser for the Raising the Roof Habitat for Humanity, and I had the, I needed a prop for my table, and believe it or not, I found it on the street in Longview. It was a yard sign, and I thought, "God, I got to have that." So do I steal it, or do I just go knock on the door? I wouldn't really steal it. I wouldn't, my youth, but, so I went and knocked on the door, and I asked the guy, "Could I please use his yard sign?" Because I had the need for it. And he looked at me, and he said, "Absolutely, you can." And I said, "Well, thank you. I'll bring it back in the morning." He goes, "Whenever it's good, that's fine." And I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Whitsett on Sheffield for being so generous and kind and being a good citizen of Longview, and, you know, good people out there all over the place. Just look for them. You'll find them everywhere you look. Survey time. Question. It is official election season. What level of government do you feel has the most direct impact on your life? Federal, state, or local? This survey won as federal. 39%. Local came in a close second at 36%. Quite interesting. So just know that your local government does make a difference in your lives. Remember to support local government and be involved. Quickly, we are approaching Super Tuesday. Who do you think will win the president's nomination in Texas? Wow, overwhelming. I have not looked at these results until right now. Overwhelmingly, 45% Ted Cruz. There you have it. Okay, so that's what the voter said. All right, book club. Guys, we've had a long meeting. Let's, go ahead, we have a quick video, right? I want to tell you, this week, we had the opportunity to, I'll say in a minute. Go ahead.
You know, I was going to ask you a question, you know, what would your advice be to someone like me, an elected official, who's trying to move an entire city on a positive bus, all while trying to ignore those energy vampires? Which, I love that term, by the way. I use it all the time. I love energy vampires. I mean, I don't love them, but I love the term, yeah.
Well, I think that's great. I mean, anytime you're rallying people toward the future, as a leader like you are, you know you're always going to have naysayers. You'll have the energy vampires who don't believe in what you believe, who don't see what you see, who don't share your optimism. And I think there's a great line in the book that says, you know, "I will not let anyone walk through my mind with their dirty feet."
Yeah, yeah.
As Gandhi said. And we just have to post that sign that says, "No energy vampires allowed," that our positive energy must be greater than their negativity. Our certainty must be greater than their doubt. And so we just keep moving forward. We keep asking people to get on. More and more will get on, some won't, but we just keep moving forward. And then eventually, you have this standing-room-only bus.
That was pretty cool. We had the author of the energy bus, John Gordon, on a live chat on Monday night with a number of people in the community, hearing council chambers. It was a great discussion. He's a very interesting guy, very energetic. He's a guy that's the most positive thing I've ever seen. Every time I see his Facebook page, it's something positive, it's something inspiring, it's something that makes me want to say, "I want to be like that guy." And so, you know, that's what I took from this. It was great. It's been a great study so far, and I hope you all have continued to do your reading. Any comments on it this week?
Just one quick thing. We've had some disagreements tonight among the seven of us, but the important thing is that after all is said and done, we all need to be on this bus, moving forward in a positive way. And I think we do.
Anyone else? Very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.